Hi, welcome everybody. I'd like to call to order our November 8th, 2010 meeting of the City Council of Redevelopment. Start off with a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, for the last hour, starting at 6:00, we had a closed session. Mr. Rubens, our city attorney, would you like to report on items on closed session, please?
There's no reportable items on closed session tonight.
Okay. Moving on, any changes to the order of the agenda? Ms. Malby, any?
No changes this evening, Mr. Mayor.
From council? Okay. Okay. Oh, I see. Okay, got it. Council, communication, and announcements. Mr. Grocott, anything? Mr. Grisilli?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Klein?
Okay, I just have two. First off, the Fire Board meeting scheduled for Wednesday has been canceled due to a lack of an agenda, so we will be having one in December, and we will let you know when that is. The other is late October. I had the pleasure of volunteering at the Chambers Goblin Walk. It was the Second Annual Goblin Walk. For those who don't know what a Goblin Walk is, it is an event put on in San Carlos on Laurel Street from San Carlos Avenue to Arroyo where children seven years and under are given the opportunity to trick-or-treat in the afternoon at the businesses on Laurel Street. Miller &amp; Associates was one of the major sponsors, and they put together the treat bags, and hundreds and hundreds of children descended up on Laurel Street, which was closed for that length of time, and frequented all the businesses. It was an absolutely fantastic event, so kudos to David Bouchard and his staff and all the Chamber volunteers and the sponsors for the second year of having an absolutely fantastic event. If you didn't come this year, definitely mark it on your calendars for next year because I'm sure we'll be having it again.
Great, thank you. Mr. Maud? So, I have one item for communications. We have, actually tomorrow night, I did mention something about this a couple of weeks ago. Meals and Wheels has a program throughout the Bay Area, which restaurants that participate, a portion of their proceeds will go to Meals and Wheels. Meals and Wheels provides about 150,000 meals to elderly people in San Mateo County. They not only provide the meal, but a lot of times it's the social, the only social contact that a lot of these elderly people have. So, Methos tomorrow night, great place for dinner. Vanilla Moon's a good place for, from early morning through lunch also, but there are participating restaurants. We're very proud of them, and of course, we're very, very proud of Meals and Wheels and what they do for several of our people in our town here, so that. Secondly, as part of our closed sessions, I will report on, we've had interviews with openings in both our Park and Rec Commission and our Arts and Culture. We have selected very happily, we have Susan Todd, who I see in the back row, she'll have to start moving up closer to the front row here, but congratulations to Susan. And for Arts and Culture, we have Mary Ann McLaughlin and Cynthia Gu-Mucchio. So, congratulations to our newest volunteers for the city of San Carlos. Congratulations. You are the mayor.
We all thought you were going to do it.
Oh, my God. Well, this is not dirty work. This is fun. Thank you. We did have a very special ceremony this past week. We had at the historical rotunda in Redwood City on the steps in which we predicted, they had predicted rain, a beautiful sunny early or mid-morning swearing-in of all of our police officers and police staff, which had really, really cool, these hats, what are those hats called? Kind of the...
Smokey the Bear hats.
All right? Smokey the Bear hats. They all look the same to me, except for their Smokey the Bear hats, but a lot of smiles. It was a very touching, to me personally, I could add, all their families were there. And the one moment after the Greg Monks, the sheriff's, head sheriff here, our sheriff for San Mateo County, after his talk and swearing-in, each officer had a family member or a friend or someone come up and pin their badge on, and it was very, very nice. A great, great celebration for the city of San Carlos, a major change. We're very confident with it, but it was a great ceremony to kick it off right here. And thanks to our police chief captain, we call him our chief here, Greg Ruffus, in the first row here. So, thank you. Great, thank you. You guys are getting me doing all the talking here in the beginning.
What happens when you sit in the middle seat?
Okay. So, presentations, we're up to item five. We have two. One is with the Rotary Club, we have something special going on, and next with our San Carlos Educational Foundation. So, let me turn it over to the president of Rotary Club, alias city clerk, Christine Bowden.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you very much for having us tonight. Switching my hat, yes, I am the president of the Rotary Club of San Carlos, and tonight, if you could join us down here, it's our distinct pleasure to present you with a check, come on, guys, from our club for $20,000. We're donating this money to the city in order to buy trash cans on Laurel, to spruce up the downtown, make it look great, and it'll tie in nicely with the new trash service in January, so...
Can I touch it? You actually get to keep it.
You can keep it and cash it.
Thank you very, very much.
Thanks. These are our hard-working Rotarians, including our council member Klein, so thank you very much for coming out tonight.
Would you like to say something?
No, she's the president. I don't, I'm not top talking.
Thank you.
Well, I'm actually not prepared. Usually, I am prepared for almost everything, but I would like to say, I mean, we are really proud of our downtown. We are proud of our service organizations, and tonight, we're very proud of Rotary because we could be proud of something else. And I know several of our city council members have spoken to me this past year about how important it is that we have a clean downtown, and nothing helps more than what we do to the hard-working people of our city to keep it clean, having proper garbage cans, especially around those coffee houses, and all the recycling, you know, which this will provide, both recycling and garbage. So, it's a pretty cool place, and as you travel in other parts of the world, it's always nice to come home and drive up the street or walk down Laurel, and it's things like this that make it special. So, this is a really hefty contribution. I wish you could help more with the general fund, but we'll start off with garbage cans here and recycling and so forth. Appreciate it, and I'd like to shake your hand again very much. Thank you. So, Mr. Rubens, can I take this home for the evening, or do I have to turn it over right away?
Good luck getting on your wallet, Jeff.
Yeah. I'd fit it in my wallet. I'm really good. I just, he's got a bigger wallet. We, yeah, we in council, we know how to do that, bigger wallet. So, we have actually two special guests here this evening. They're probably as busy as we are in council and meetings throughout the whole year. They are our co-presidents of our educational foundation for the city of San Carlos. So, Jennifer Kaufman and Sally Gus- Gus Barcy, would you come on up and join us, please? Hi, Sally. Hi, Jennifer.
Hello.
Come on up here. I don't know how the cameras work either, but we have a proclamation here to read to our leaders of Educational Foundation and to all of the people in Educational Foundation. There is a huge crew of people that work on this every year. You know, what makes this a little special is people appreciate, I just talked about the downtown, the other couple of things that people like about San Carlos is they always talk about great schools and a great place to live because it's so safe here. It's funny, in the last 10 minutes, we talked about, a little bit about safety with the sheriff, we talked about our downtown, and now we're talking about schools. So, God, we're covering all the important stuff here in the first part of the meeting. It's also somewhat special tonight because this is a proclamation that actually got initiated from city council, talking about how much and how proud we are from the schools and why we're proud of the schools, and how Educational plays a major role, Educational Foundation plays a major role in making that happen. So, I will read the formality here, and I'm going to read all of this because it's all really good, and it's really important, and I think a lot of people in the city of San Carlos don't know. Where the, commending the San Carlos Educational Foundation, where the San Carlos Educational Foundation is a parent-volunteer nonprofit organization that promotes educational excellence by raising funds to bridge the gap, we know what a gap is now, between district needs and state funding. Whereas in 2009 and '10, Educational Foundation raised $1.7 million, which is about 7% of the entire budget for the annual, for the annual budget for the district, and it's roughly equivalent to all the monies that we get with Measure B and Measure D. Whereas, they recently signed an agreement with all seven schools that ensures equivalent educational opportunities for all of our children in San Carlos. Whereas, if you disagree with something, speak up. All right, huh? Whereas, without parents and community support for public education in San Carlos, the elementary schools would have to consider cutting or eliminating, and it doesn't say this, but they would probably have to cut all of this. Am I close? And what I'm going to speak about is considering cutting or eliminating music, literacy, physical education, library, technology, fine arts, science, vice principals, and counseling. So, it's thereby now that it be proclaimed that I, Randy Royce, and our entire city council hereby commend San Carlos Educational Foundation, and I would say, your staff and the parents and the businesses, because that's what makes it all happen, that's not here, but I'll add it, in its tremendous fundraising efforts and wish the foundation's success in the future endeavors dated this 8th day of November 2010. That's to you. Thank you very, very much. Thank you. Thank you very much. Item six is public comment. This was, we welcome anybody in the public, would like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda, could come up and share any thoughts you have or comments. Anybody would like to speak, public comment? See if they have any speaker cards. Are all on other items, I believe? Yes. Anybody? Okay. Moving on to item seven, approval of the consent calendar. The consent calendar items to be considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on any of these items unless someone from the public or city council wishes specific items be removed for separate action. So, with that, confer with my council on what they would like to do here on consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of items 7A through 7I.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull 7B, but I'll second the motion.
Okay, so, you're seconding the motion of everything with the exception of B.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other recommendations? Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Maud?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Royce?
Yes.
So, if I could, with that one item, Vice Mayor Maud, would you like to bring up your point on B?
Mr. Mayor, 7B is the minutes from October 25th. And I have referred this matter to the clerk, so I just wanted to make note of the change. On item 7D in the amendments, the vote was recorded as 3, 1, and 1. Mr. Grisilli was recused from that, so the vote should be recorded as 3, 0, and 2. So, with that amendment, I move approval of the minutes.
Okay, second?
Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Maud?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
A few times going and talking to other cities about some of our recent experiences with shared services. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have, and we'll be planning on bringing you a future report when I have more detailed information. Great?
So if I could just add to let the public know, these are all city managers getting together. The mayors and city council people get together every month for dinner and have various topics. Shared Services was on our agenda for this, actually next week's dinner. That's been postponed slightly because the San Bruno fire, the city manager from San Bruno is going to be speaking about everything that went on with the pipeline fiasco, of course, that they had. So, but just to let the public know, Shared Services is a topic that we're all sharing, both council and staff, in looking at opportunities for all cities to work together to do the right things. With that, yeah. Thank you. Any questions or other comments from council? Good. Thank you. So, let's see here. We're moving on to a public hearing. We have three items. First item, Mr. Rubens, I see this is on the wireless. Wireless has withdrawn the applications. Anything I need to be announcing here or do? Or can we skip on to B quickly, or what?
You know, it's basically the, because the applicant, Verizon Wireless, has withdrawn the application, that makes the need for the public hearing and consideration of the appeal moot, because it's no longer before the council. You know, it is on for a public hearing, so if there is someone here who would like to speak to that item, they would have an opportunity to do that.
And just to let the public know, and people at our home that are viewing, this is, was an original proposal for modified wireless facility work at 920 Buckland Avenue in our city. Would anybody like to speak on this? Please. Brian Randall, come on up. Anybody else do? While Brian's walking up? Okay.
Well, I have a question while he's walking up. Mr. Rubens, are we going to be refunding the appellant his money?
That would be something that you could bring up. It's been done in the past, but it's not automatically refundable when the application is withdrawn. But that's something you could bring up at a future meeting if you'd like.
Well, if that's the case, that's something we should bring up.
How's council feel about that? Should we?
Mr. Mayor, why don't we have Mr. Randall speak? There's a couple of questions in my mind, so.
Okay. Great. Brian, welcome.
Hi. Thank you. Brian Randall, San Carlos. Gentlemen.
Thanks.
You know, I got involved in the past couple of months with this Verizon Wireless business, and I believe this has been going on, the problems with those hillside have been going on for 15 years. I think it was almost that time when there was a first complaint about the noise that the fans were making, and nobody was able to find that or stop it. Well, like I said when I came here and spoke about that, it took me five minutes to go up there, stranger to the place, and I found the source of the noise. And not because of me, but that unit has been changed. Also, that unit that was making all the noise is definitely not green. It's a very red patch up there. The electricity that's used and produces all the heat need not have been, it need not be there, because there's a new item out now, and if that one had been used, it would have been green. And it's unfortunate that this city missed that opportunity. But my question is, that after all the battling that's been going on over this for so long, why did Verizon Wireless withdraw its application?
So, great. Okay, so we'll try to help you on that. Anything else you want to ask or comment on?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, move to close public hearing.
Okay. All in favor?
Right.
opposed? Deborah, would you like to, do you have any information on that, or anybody from the company here would be welcome to? Welcome, Deborah Nelson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members.
And if you could define your role, I'm sorry, so the public knows.
I'm Deborah Nelson, the Planning Manager, and I do have some photos, if you'd like to look at them, at what their alternative plan is, but they have withdrawn their-
Just adjusting the simple, if you can, I'm not sure if you can.
They have withdrawn the use permit application for new antenna, and instead, they will be submitting for a building permit, which we allow under our code to replace two of the existing antenna. They're like-for-like visually, though they're more powerful, and they will put two new equipment cabinets inside an existing shelter. All of that, according to our code, can be done under a building permit.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. Okay. Mr. Klein, you want to jump in there with your comment there?
And since I didn't sit on the planning commission, maybe our four planning commissioners can fill me in. When an appellant wins, essentially, we refund the money, correct?
No.
No, not all the time?
I don't think it's automatic, is the point. It's something that's within your purview to do.
Okay, well, and the only reason I'm thinking is, the appellant spent this money to have an appeal, and Verizon walked away, and apparently they're going to do something else, and I just think it's worth giving them their money back. They didn't really get much of a show. They didn't, you know, I mean Verizon left, which is great, but there's still going to be building which may cause another appeal, possibly. I don't know if that's even appealable.
But I was going to go too. I'm sorry, go ahead, finish.
So, that would be my thoughts. If we could talk about it at a later date, I'd like us to discuss refunding them their money.
Can we talk about the, giving their money back tonight?
Yeah, I was having a discussion. I think I'd feel more comfortable if we had it as a separate item, because the refund-
But a similar type, a little bit different question, is the thing that Ms. Nelson said that they're going to do, is that an appealable item?
Administrative decisions can be appealed through a process within our code.
Now, would that require the appellant to pay an additional fee then? Or would it fall into this one?
There would be, there would be additional fees.
So the individual is, so, so the corporation, or the company withdraws X, meanwhile, Mr. Jones or Mr. Smith, whoever, and I know who it was, Mr. Pollock, paid his money, he may or may not get that back, he can appeal the second one, but he has to pay again.
That's the way the ordinance reads.
I'm not picking on you, I'm just verbalizing.
And, but the appeals are different depending on the level of appeal, so the first appeal is to the-
I know they're different, but I mean, in effect-
Yeah, zoning administrator, and then the planning commissioner.
I realize, I realize it's a different technical issue, but for me, it's, they're coming up with a new, they're still showing up with new stuff and putting it up there, whether it's new, old, white, whatever, black, pink, yellow, green, whatever. I'm just trying to make sure everybody understands that the appellant might have to pay again. So I'm, we need to discuss, I think, the item in a separate-
That's definitely a part of the factual background. It sounds like you want to discuss it at a future meeting.
I mean, this council person would like to do that.
So, Mr. Mayor, could we have that on the next, at the next meeting?
What is feeling from council? Yeah, so overall, yes, so let's get that scheduled. Thank you, Mr. Rubens. I wasn't trying to pick on you, you know, being the bad guy, just trying to understand what's going on. The bad guy? No. Okay, so, Mr. Rubens, that's enough on 9A then? We'll move on here. Okay, we have two other items, public hearing. The next one we'll be discussing is 9B, which is, deals with a seven-lot housing on Prospect, and then we will then, on 9C, just to give you overview where we're headed, the other public hearing, third one, 9C, is our citywide traffic mitigation fees. So with that, let me go back to 9B. I'll introduce this. It's a consideration of a recommendation from the Planning Commission regarding seven, regarding new seven-lot, single-family detached subdivision, mitigated negative declaration, ordinance amendment for a planned community zone, a conditional use permit, maintenance area adjacent to stream channels, and conditional exception to subdivision standards at 665 Prospect/Mirabelle, APN number 050122150 and 05012216. Turn it over to our staff, Deborah Nelson.
Deborah Nelson, Planning Manager. Thank you very much, Mayor and council members. Tonight, you're being asked to consider the 665 Prospect Street Mirabelle project, which has a number of entitlements, and on this first slide, those are illustrated as environmental review, mitigated negative declaration, an ordinance amendment, a maintenance of areas adjacent to stream channels, conditional exception to the subdivision regulations, conditional use permit, and an affirmation of Planning Commission approvals. This is sort of a bifurcated process. I also want to note that I did receive a number of questions from some, several council members today, and I'll be addressing those as we go through, and certainly available for more questions. The site is two parcels, which, with one single-family house on it at the dead end of Prospect Street. It's .6 acres along Pogus Creek, and it's primarily surrounded by multifamily uses to the north, east, and west, and single-family opposite the creek. There's relatively dense tree coverage and other vegetation on the site. Situated among other high-density residential projects, this site has characteristics which suggest a tailored approach. A small lot multifamily pattern is found across the street on Prospect, a relatively new subdivision, and the site at the terminus of a dead-end street, and although the emergency service departments, as well as the garbage and recycling provider, have reviewed the configurations and determined them acceptable, the project is still found to have special circumstances because of all of these site constraints. There's 209 feet of creek frontage, as I mentioned, both single-family and multifamily adjacent, and it's remained undeveloped for quite some time from its underlying multifamily land use. A most recent development was for up to 20 units, which would have required removal of almost all of the heritage trees on site, and was found in preliminary review to be pretty unacceptable in the neighborhood. So we believe the small lot pattern is, best addresses the numerous constraints that are there, and allows for a planned community zone to be applied. The applicant did a bunch of public outreach by holding a community meeting earlier in the year, and has had numerous subsequent follow-up meetings and phone calls with individuals to discuss their concerns and questions. Additionally, letters and public comment at the Planning Commission were also considered in the recommendation for this project. And in brief, the concerns have been lack of vehicle turnaround, which, and lack of on-street parking, the overall density, the proximity to the creek, tree removal, length of construction time, general public safety, height and height of structures. There are those who support it also, who've endorsed the project design as being respective of the trees and the neighborhood, and also that the driveway is, the permeable driveway is a good approach. So the project itself is seven detached clustered residential units on small lots. This is a development pattern that's been tested in other communities, and I, as I mentioned, one similar across the street. The houses themselves are 2,644 square feet to almost 3,000 square feet, and the structures greater than 28 feet in height are adjacent to the multifamily uses. And I have graphics to point out where those are in a minute. There's a permeable driveway off Prospect Street with three open guest parking spaces, which translates to not quite one-half space per unit, but that's greater than parking spaces for guests and other similar projects in that particular neighborhood. There are two parking spaces and new permeable paving created at the end of the street, and a granite pathway and benches along Pogus Creek in the 25-foot setback. The project requires removal of 13 heritage trees and 42 non-heritage trees, and there is an off-site parking, or planting plan that will be required. The council approvals are, actually, there are eight different entitlements. Four of those are the council approvals. The environmental review and negative declaration, the ordinance amendment, which also has a conditional use permit that I'll talk about in some more detail in a minute. There's a maintenance of areas adjacent to stream channels, and a conditional exception to subdivision standards. Planning Commission was the decision-making body for the tentative map, architectural review, heritage tree removal, and a below-market rate housing plan. These recommendations are to the city council in that they're integral to the project design, and we will be asking you to adopt a resolution that affirms those Planning Commission recommendations. So the first thing for you to consider is a mitigated negative declaration for the document. The consulting firm PMC is also here tonight to answer any specific questions, but the document itself identified the impacts for the project, and determined that all impacts could be lessened to a degree of insignificance with implementation of specific mitigation measures. There also was an errata, which is in your pocket, in your packet. There was not a need to recirculate this errata as it dealt with clarifying language and mitigation and typographical errors. There also were a number of, two letters of comment. We based the environmental evaluation also off the general plan, EIR, which considered a build-out of this particular property at 21 units per acre. So we drilled down and focused the mitigated negative declaration on the site constraints, primarily biological, and also internal and Prospect Street circulation and parking issues, among others. The, there are 17 specific mitigation measures associated with the mitigated negative declaration, and those are adopted with a mitigation monitoring and reporting program. There were two letters were received, one from the Airport Land Use Commission, with no reportable issues, and another from individuals that reside on Prospect Street with concern about circulation, and we believe the mitigated negative declaration addresses these issues and finds no significant impact. City council adopts the mitigated negative declaration by resolution of the city council, and there's two exhibits, mandatory findings of significance, and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and that is much like conditions of approval, they get implemented as the project is put in place. And moving on to your second item, that's an ordinance amendment. And the ordinance amendment is to rezone the site from its R3, which is a multifamily residential zone, to PC, which is a planned community zoning. You've done this a number of times in the community. We have 20 or more of these, many in the hills, some of them in downtown locations. Accompanying that planned community zone is a conditional use permit, and that conditional use permit allows uses other than single-family. The current planned community regulations anticipate creative approaches which recognize that alternative development patterns may be beneficial. However, the regulations do not allow for consideration of a clustered detached small lot development such as this. On the other hand, the general plan just adopted last October does consider this kind of development pattern, and therefore, we do have findings for you that is consistent with the general plan and appropriate for this site. Because of the proximity to Pogus Creek, the project also requires a determination relative to the creek ordinance, and this is the maintenance of areas adjacent to stream channels, kind of an awkward title, but that's the way it's written in our creek ordinance. And our subdivision regulations are also very focused on our standard lot patterning for single-family, and since this is not standard, you have to make an exception to that. All of this is wrapped into the PC zone, which consists of a map and ordinance. Also in the PC zone, this conditional use permit that I mentioned, there are findings in the ordinance which find that the proposed use of clustered single-family home-type structures on small lots with shared common space reflects the intent of the multifamily housing in the general plan designation. Moving on to the maintenance of areas adjacent to stream channels, the project must comply with a city's creek ordinance, which includes 25-foot setback from top of bank. And I did have questions today about the top-of-bank determination and how they're represented on the various plans, which I'll also get to later, but I want to acknowledge that Robert, our Public Works Director, is responsible for that determination and can answer any further questions you have when I'm done. And the determination is also that the improvements in the setback, because some minor improvements are allowed, and in this case, it's benches and a path, that those are low-intensity passive recreation. And so what we're asking you to do is make findings regarding these two issues. The project complies with a 25-foot riparian setback measured from top of the creek bank, and it's free and clear of building construction. There is proposed within this is the passive recreation, an 1,186-square-foot decomposed granite pathway, approximately 200 feet in width with six pedestrian benches, not 200 feet in width, but six pedestrian benches, and this would only be accessible to residents. It's not open to the general public. Finally, both mitigated negative declaration and the staff report analyze the walkway potential to impact and aggravate drainage flows, interfering with streamside habitat, minimizing erosion and runoff to the creek, and maintenance of the riparian zone vegetation to the greatest extent feasible. The walkway is determined to be of minimal disturbance in the already degraded area, and the combination of numerous mitigation measures, as well as conditions of approval, support the low-intensity passive recreation, consistent with the ordinance. Finally, in this ordinance is the conditional exceptions to subdivision standards, because our standards do not factor in the criteria for clustered residential small lot development, so the lots proposed are smaller and have lesser width and depth than defined in the subdivision ordinance. You adopt in this zone an exception to Chapter 14, 17.40, the city subdivision ordinance, and that formalizes that the standards applied to this site are acceptable. And just as a conclusion, this slide represents what the ordinance represents. It adopts a zoning map, which defines the boundaries of the parcel. It adopts a PC zoning district, and that includes a plan of development. The plan of development are pages attached to your staff report, which are primarily architectural plans, they also include some engineered drawings. They are, the plans available at this point in the process. I'd like to point out that as we go through the building permit plans, they get more and more specific. But adopted as an, attached to an ordinance, we'd like them to be more general in nature, recognizing that as you get into the building permit phase, little numbers can change this way or that, very slightly, and we wouldn't want to have to come back to you with an amendment to the plan of development because there is a change in the width of one individual driveway, for example. Also, there are these conditions, a reference to the conditions of the use, the conditional use permit, and similar to the plan of development, we've got 48 right now, and I expect you may add more conditions of approval, and we don't want that too specific so that it means future amendments. We do want it referenced, and so that it's a broad reference, and then it's implemented. You approve the creek ordinance exception, and also the exception to the subdivision. Now, moving along, I don't have too many more, to the actions of the Planning Commission. They recommended 48 conditions for the conditional use permit. They recommended a tentative map, an architectural review, a heritage tree removal, and a below-market rate housing plan. The tentative map by code is a request to merge the two existing parcels and re-subdivide them into seven new lots. And there is a piece of paper that is called the tentative map certificate. It has 10 conditions associated with it. This tentative map is also referenced in the conditional use permit, so it gets adopted a number of ways. The architectural review is represented up on there and in your packet, and on a number of the boards, the color and material renderings for each of the seven homes, as well as the proposed landscaping and irrigation plan are part of the architectural review. Two of the seven homes are illustrated here, and the other renderings are in your package. This is the site plan, and I'd like to point out a couple of things. There are three houses adjacent to the creek, 1, 2, and 3. This first one is 28 feet in height, two stories. The next is 28 feet in height and three stories, and the project applicant could probably describe how they get three stories and 28 feet in height. And number 3 is 27 feet in height and two stories. These are relatively low in height because across the creek is single-family residential. The fourth house is also adjacent to single-family residential directly above it, and so it is 26 feet in height and two stories. 5, 6, and 7 are adjacent to multifamily, their height is 34 and 35. I should note that the current R3 zoning for the site has a height range of 30 to 40 feet allowed. Single-family is 28 feet, and since this is a hybrid kind of development with a PC zone, it's appropriate that you have different heights for different properties. The height of these homes are designed to tie all of the districts together in design as well, and this design strategy is supported in the general plan. This is kind of a small slide, but it does also represent the various components of architectural review related to height, the number of floors, the lot size of each parcel, the amount of backyard open space, and the lot coverage. This is adopted as part of the plan of development as well. Regarding heritage tree removal, I'm sorry. Regarding heritage tree removal, there are 72 trees on the site. 25 of them are heritage trees. 13 of those 25 are proposed for removal.
Ms. Nelson, I apologize. What was F? Did you talk about that, or?
Which? The previous one?
Yes. I missed it. You sort of flew by it, and I was-
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't, I guess I don't have it before me, so I'm gonna have to read it to you.
You went over all that. Oh, that's fine. You went over it all. I just, I just didn't know why you flew by it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I did verbally, what I didn't mention is that these conditions are also in the code compliance certificate and the conditional use permit. Thank you. I was missing one in my package here. The applicant has submitted an arborist report. That report details the size and health of the trees per accepted industry standards. Dead or diseased trees are typically allowed for removal under our heritage tree ordinance as they can be detrimental to the health of the existing trees. And at the site, the dead trees along the creek bank are also found to have potential to degrade the future slope stability and watershed integrity of the creek by their inevitable failure. Graphically, the representation is 25 heritage trees with 13 proposed for removal. Three of those are dead. The two with asterisk, fair condition and good condition, must be replaced. The two with asterisk "fair" condition and "good" condition must be replaced, both by the mitigation monitoring plan and our heritage tree removal. Those can be onsite or offsite. Of those 10, nine of them are native coast live oak. Our emphasis will probably be on replacing the native trees. There's one significant tree that's a magnolia. There will be some ornamental trees probably in the landscape plan as well, but our emphasis will be on the coast live oaks. The mitigated negative declaration also discusses the tree coverage in terms of biological or other environmental impact, and that although they are heritage trees, they are not of condition that would determine that this is a biological resource that has a severe impact. It's mostly related to the trees are removed, and the mitigation would be to replace them. The condition for the heritage tree removal are also included in the mitigation monitoring and reporting plan and the conditional use permit. So all of these planning commission determinations are also integrated into all of the approvals that you will be asked to do, too. Okay, finally, the below-market-rate housing plan you adopted in ordinance not that long ago, and this project would trigger the creation of one unit with a restricted sales price of $499,374. There's also a provision in your ordinance that allows the applicant to request an alternative means of compliance through paying a housing in lieu fee. That in lieu fee is $357,720,000 set by council resolution, based on the number of units and the average square footage. Also is required by the ordinance, the applicant submitted a pro forma analysis of the project development costs, which was reviewed by the city's economic consulting firm, RSG, for peer review. RSG determined that the project has demonstrated economic infeasibility should the BMR unit be constructed onsite, specifically due to a funding gap of $558,780, which is the total cost to construct the unit, less the revenue produced by the sale of the unit to a moderate-income price household, and the extremely low anticipated developer profit of 3%, where 12.5% would be the assumed reasonable market rate. Further determined, RSG determined that these monies are sufficient to produce a similar, if not greater, amount of affordable housing for the city, because it goes in the city's housing fund and could be used offsite in another project. Had the proposal been for six units, there'd be no BMR potential, and rather than one four-bedroom unit as a for-sale home on the site, there is potential with this in lieu fee for the city to use the money to broader means. So, the planning commission recommendations, we're asking you to adopt a resolution. So you have two resolutions and one ordinance we're asking you to adopt. That resolution affirms the planning commission actions, ties them to the approval of the city council. And it, the affirmations are of the code compliance certificate, including their conditions and any you may wish to add. That's an Exhibit A. Of their approval of the tentative map, which has 10 conditions, which is Exhibit B. Of their approval of the heritage tree removal permit, which also are referenced in the conditions of the conditional use permit and the mitigation monitoring program, and their approval of the architectural review. And references is tied a number of places there in the plan of development and the CUP. And finally, the planning commission approval of the housing ordinance for in lieu fee. Based on the input I received today, I prepared this slide, too, that the council may wish to make other amendments to the conditional use permit, and these had to do with the plans that were in your packet. The plans are kind of a hybrid of things. There are architectural plans, and there are engineered plans. So with the plan of development, you might want to add some conditions to the conditional use permit that reflect the top of the bank accurately on Sheet 1, which is the site plan, which reflect exterior elevations, roof pitch, and elevations of finished floor and elevations of each floor on the architectural plans, sheets, and there are seven sheets there, and revised plans for the grading, preliminary grading plan, which also reflect finished floor and roof height, and other conditions, and any other conditions that the council may wish to add as we go through your discussion tonight. So it's recommended that the council approve the request for environmental review, ordinance amendment, conditional use permit, maintenance of areas adjacent to stream channels, conditional exception to subdivision standards, tentative map, architectural review, heritage tree removal, and below-market-rate housing by adopting two resolutions and one ordinance. And then there will be three motions. A motion for the mitigated negative declaration, a motion for the ordinance, and a motion for a resolution affirming all the planning commission and adopting a conditional use permit. With that, I'm available for questions, and I'd also like to introduce Ed Dow, the applicant who would like to do some further presentation on how they got from what was allowed by the zoning to the project they're proposing, and other city staffs also available.
You said the applicant would like to talk about that?
Yes.
Would it be best now, you think? Would you recommend that?
Unless you would like to do that, and we'll save your questions.
Sure. And then, just as the applicant is coming up here, just to talk to the viewers and people here, let you know we'll get the update here from the applicant. Of course, we just went through the staff report, comments from the applicant. Questions, then, from council will be third. Any specific questions we have about the presentation or the project so far. We'll open it up for public comment next will be fourth. And anybody would like to speak on this item, if you have any questions or comments, recommendations, it'll come back, then, to city council for discussion and voting. So that's our process of what we're doing. So this was step two. Well, applicant, please, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ed Dow. I'm president of Maribel Development Company. Before you tonight, we are presenting our project located at 665 Prospect Street. The site consists of .61 acres with seven custom detached single-family homes. For over a year and a half, actually almost 20 months now, our development team and consultants, along with city staff from the planning, engineering, building, and fire departments, have worked together tirelessly to achieve this funnily-designed and exceptionally well-planned small community. The homes feature attached two-car garages with four bedrooms and three and a half baths, living rooms, dining rooms, family rooms, and laundry rooms. The project features craftsman-style homes. Each home is custom to each lot. Our use of exterior materials was selected to be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. Our project also features a walkway made of decomposed granite and natural material along the creek with benches. When we first looked at the project, we took into consideration its current zoning. Also, the previous applicant and owner had completed substantial amount of drawings for a project consisting of 21 condominiums on a podium with underground parking. Although their approach was consistent with current zoning, we felt it was inappropriate for the site. We looked at various scenarios ranging from multifamily condominium project to an attached townhome project. After visiting and studying the site numerous times, well, actually several times, and looking at the mature trees, the creek, the surrounding neighborhood, we felt that a completely new approach would be the right thing to do. Our new approach was substantially reduce the density and layout of the site and start with a roadway around the trees that are most significant, and the residual land would be the lots. We had hoped to achieve eight homes to take, to make this project economically feasible. After numerous revisions, site visits, and consultations with our tree arborist, landscape architect, architect civil engineer, and city staff, taking into consideration the creek, heritage trees, protection of trees, circulation, building footprints, and access, we came up with the layout before you tonight consisting of seven homes. Although seven homes was economically infeasible, we worked with city staff towards the BMR in lieu fee program to mitigate the costs and therefore render this project economically feasible. Additionally, we had a community outreach meeting on January 5, 2010. About 20 guests attended the meeting. We discussed their concerns and have since worked towards mitigating their concerns. On October 18, 2010, the planning commission unanimously approved the project with three modifications, that the pathway along the creek be at a minimum of five feet from the top of bank. There was one spot that actually was at five feet. Everything else was much farther away, but there was one spot that was about three feet. And the plans before you tonight include this modification. And also, a tree planting plan across the creek on four neighboring homes for additional screening that would happen across the creek, from the creek, and that the CCNRs be approved and reviewed by the city attorney. We hope that our proposed new community meets your approval. Finally, thank you for your time and consideration. I'll be more than happy to answer any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for those comments. Okay, so let's go to our next step, then. Go ahead, to have a see if you have any questions. We'll call you or Deborah up for sure. Turn maybe, we'll start here with Mr. Grocott. Any questions you have, anything clarification, please, and then we'll move left or right here.
Excuse me, I have a couple of questions. Deborah, from your presentation, and thank you for addressing the comments and questions I sent in earlier today. So one of the questions I had was just about the vagueness of floor elevations and then the lack of roof slopes shown on the drawings. And you've talked about how you might address that, and we could add those as, the slide here, what you have here, that we could add that as a conditional, as a condition. However, based on your comments, I'm wondering if that's really the best approach. They do have on all of the elevations heights. Not all of them scale exactly right. Some of them are, you know, just six inches or so off. But perhaps a better approach than what you've suggested here, and I took from your comments earlier, might be to take a more general approach where each, each structure, each unit, if you will, or each house is given, is labeled with some kind of maximum height. And then in the engineering and the plans, you know, if dimensions change a little bit, as long as they stay underneath that height that's shown currently, then they're going to be okay. And that could be done through adjusting the slope of the roof. You know, if something gets a little wider, for instance, when the engineering is done and the final architectural plans are drawn, then they could just adjust their roof slope. Whereas if we put roof slope on those plans, I think what you were saying is they'd have to amend that because it's now given on the drawings as, as something specific. And the same thing with the, with the floor elevations. They show them on there, and they scale okay, but if we give very specific numbers, if I understand what you're saying is if anything changed, then they might have to make an amendment to that.
Sorry, I'm trying to work technology. Here we go, previous.
Have the elevations sorted, which are the height of the floor.
I just took a guess, because we didn't get a chance to talk today what you might, how you might like to address this, and this was my suggestion, but we could also, based on what you're saying, I'm sorry, I'm not getting my arrow here on the previous. We could include in that matrix of the plan, this, sorry?
There you go, right there, yeah.
We could include, include here a maximum height. We could also have the architectural plans. They do say that the roof pitch is 12 and 6. I had understood the comment to maybe want to know what the, on the grading plan, it shows the elevation of the, of the floor, but not the elevation of the roof compared to that. So I read your comment as perhaps you wanted to know it relative to the grading plan elevation, as well as just the overall height of the building for finished floor, roof pitch.
Right. My concern was especially, you know, I didn't know what the audience was going to look tonight, look like tonight. But, you know, if there are people that were really concerned about height, and, you know, we just have these figures that are shown on a drawing that don't, they don't, they just label the height. They don't say it's maximum height or anything. They just, it just says, you know, 28 feet, but it's not labeled maximum height. And because these datum points weren't given, the datum points of the floor levels, and then the, the other floors and so forth as the building came up from the ground, that in the engineering process and the architectural drawings that go to building, and then in the actual construction, things could be changed, and something that's labeled at 28 feet, when it's all said and done, ends up being 29 feet. And, you know, if we had a roomful of neighbors that were really concerned about height, and we let something go from 28 to 29, and another building from 32 to 36, because of roof pitches that weren't shown, and because things were nebulous, I would feel like we didn't do our job. But I understand from what you're saying tonight to us about the process, that perhaps a better way is just to give these different buildings a maximum height, and how they come up with it, with whatever roof pitch, let them do it.
Yeah, and maybe then the applicant would like to respond to what that maximum height might be relative to, once you get on the site and you have your structural engineer do the architectural and building permit plans.
Actually, the plans do reflect the roof pitch on all the plans. The problem is when they get reduced, they're tough to see. Sometimes they're right on the roof. And they all call out maximum height, like, for example, Sheet 2.4 for Lot 2, that was a concern with Mr. Erbs and Pamela, his wife, she goes by the last name Gallin. They live on Carmelita. We reduced that house, and we do have a maximum height of 28 feet. So all the plans call that out, the maximum height and the roof pitch already. And those plans will be part of the approval, so these plans will become the approved plans in terms of what we will end up building.
Okay. So that addresses my concern?
Yeah. It's already on the plans. Thanks.
All right, all right.
Thank you.
And then the other question might be for Robert, but it has to do with the creeks, creek setback. And when I went through the plans and just scaled from what was labeled top of bank, it looked like there were some areas where the actual setback, which was also delineated on the drawings, did not follow in parallel what was labeled top of bank. And then going beyond that, regardless of what the graphic is on the drawing, my concern was that, that we, I think as a city, it's, you know, a riparian is a, is a public corridor in essence. And so it seemed to me that it would be on our backs as a city to protect that, and therefore, it should be a surveyor that you pay for, but we hire, sort of a third party that goes out, does the markings, and makes sure that no construction happens within that 25-foot zone. And I wasn't sure if that was appropriate, my proposal, or if that's the way it's done, or, or what. So maybe you could address that, or maybe Robert could address that.
Yes, the 25-foot setback, we were actually going by the grading plan. The civil drawings are the most accurate because that's what was surveyed, and that was how the houses were laid out. Now, of course, everybody else uses a different method of, because we have, of course, the architect, we have the landscape architect, we have the civil engineer, and we all try to coordinate our drawings together. And our architect uses a little different system than the civil does. So there's two houses where two of the corners actually touch that 25-foot setback, but the most accurate drawing for the setbacks, of course, of finished floor elevations and sizes of the homes as they are shown would be on the grading plan, and that's what we would go by. And we have already, of course, surveyed the site. We did an ALTA survey, not CLTA, but an ALTA survey for the site, and we actually submitted And we actually submitted and worked with city staff in the planning and in the engineering departments, different points of the entire creek bank. And we determined where the 25-foot setback was, and that took several months. So, that's already been done, the surveying and plotting the point. The only thing that's happened is, we were asked at different intervals, for example, to show certain dashed lines just so everybody can read it. And then those dashed lines were done by hand on electronic drawings, so it's not as accurate. So, if you were to scale it, you will find that discrepancy. But those were done just so we can answer some of the questions when we went for environmental review, et cetera, et cetera. But all that work was done, actually, last year, late last year.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else, Mr. Grocott? Yeah.
Mr. Griselli?
Well, Mr. Wowell wants to say something, Mr. Mayor. I apologize.
I wanted to address the process question.
Oops, sorry. My wife?
That's a 25 cent fine. Do you pay that after you speak?
And the process question being how the top of bank was determined. And in this case, it was the applicant's surveyor who went out and surveyed the top of bank, and then the city went out and checked that. And we, I, we used some reference material I obtained from the city of Napa, county of Napa, actually, on how they determine top of bank. So, I'm comfortable with that process. It's, that's something that we've done at the staff level. It's not required to do anything differently by ordinance.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Robert.
Mr. Griselli?
Well, again, the creek is, is very important, Mr. Dowell. I'm sure you're aware. You don't stand up, there's no question here, it's just sort of an editorial comment. It's very, very important to us. Mr. Wowell, needless to say, Mr. Wowell?
He, he was.
Trying to get a quarter out of his office. Gee, me.
He started talking, he knew it was going to take a while, so.
I'm sorry, Mr. Wowell. Tell your wife it's my fault, okay? No, I just want to make sure that when the process gets started, assuming it gets started, that, that the city is, is going to be, I walked this morning and some of that dirt out there is pretty loose, as they say. It's pretty loosey-goosey. So, I'm hopeful that it's going to be, I don't know whether you, whether it's improved or whatever, but just to the point of, the degradation, I guess is the term or whatever, it's going to be, we make sure that it's, I'm not as concerned about the 25 feet if it's 24 feet eight inches, I probably won't get as excited. But just the, the bank itself is pretty, it looked a little weak.
Right, right.
And so, I'm just hopeful that actually, if this progress, or a project goes forward, that actually the developer will help, be helping us by, by, by making it a more solid bank. That's, that's the intent, is that when the plans come in, we will ensure that the creek bank is stabilized. Great, thank you. That was one point I had. Ms. Nelson, I had a question for you relative to the BMR fees. Are those paid at, when the building permit is pulled, for each house individually?
I'm going to have to look that up if you give me a moment.
Okay.
It's in the.
I guess, I guess, I guess, again, another editorial comment. If it isn't, it should be, or before. In other words, what I don't want to have happen is, is someone say, well, we'll be, we'll be taking care of that as soon as we close the house. In other words, to me, when you pull the building permit, you pay all the fees.
Okay.
I mean, you don't have to pull them all at once, but.
Let me look where that condition is and the, and the conditions that I can come back to amend it.
Sure, that'd be fine.
Okay. Oh, it is, it is. My colleague advises it is.
Okay, so basically, that's, assume there were seven units, that three, and again, just average, approximately 50,000 X would be, would be paid along with all the other fees from the time the building permit is pulled.
It's paid at the time the building permits, yeah.
Thank you. That's all.
Oh, well, Ms. Nelson, is that all, Mr. Griselli?
I'm sorry?
Were you finished?
Yes.
Because I'm trying to catch her from sitting back down and then coming right back up again. So, because I have questions.
Yes, it's in condition 11 also.
Thank you. You're just helping me like, man.
Okay, Ms. Nelson, I have a couple of questions about the heritage tree removal. Not so much about the heritage trees, but we are going to be removing a great deal of trees that aren't heritage trees, correct?
Yes.
But that's not essentially called out because those aren't something that we deal with as a city. We don't, they're not being forced to be replaced, correct?
Correct, though there are trees added in the site plan. There, there are trees in various stages of health and then there are ornamental trees. There are quite a few fruit trees amongst that, amongst the trees removed, and a number of them, of course, that are in, in poor condition are dead. What we do focus on are the ones that are 48 inches in girth at this level and those that are native are the.
Do we know how many ornamental trees they plan on adding? I mean, is there going to be a major net loss? Because I know in our climate action plan and through the general plan process, we talked about a, an urban canopy and about trying to plant more trees. And so, if we're losing a great deal, our, I mean, I, I'm not as good at reading the plans as some of my other fellow council members are, so I couldn't tell like how many we are going to lose overall.
Right.
I'm sure we'll have an answer.
We have, of course, 72 trees altogether. 25 are heritage trees, so that leaves 47 non-heritage trees. We've, of course, talked about the heritage trees already, so I'll address the non-heritage. Out of the 47, 12 are either dead or completely in poor condition, so they shouldn't really be there. That leaves 35 trees. We're saving 12 that are significant. And then the other 23 we are removing, and 13 of those are in, you know, fair condition. So, those are the numbers on the non-heritage trees.
Okay.
A lot of them are just trees that have grown because of the larger trees and it's just grown right next to them, or as an under canopy.
All right, thank you. And then, Ms. Nelson, I have one final question. Regarding this site and the previous ideas for development, this site in the general plan is, is zoned, or I don't know how the term for general planned is, for it to be a much larger development area, correct?
Yes, yes.
So, this site isn't reflective of what we discussed in the general plan? We, when, when we, I mean, we discussed it in ballpark figures and we didn't get down to particular sites. But this area is one of those that could have been subject to a much larger development?
Yes. It, its density is median family up to, I'm trying to find that number, I think 25 units per acre. This translates to more like 16.
Okay.
So, it's slightly less. And we did that calculation really based only on the developable area because the setback is not.
Yeah, you don't do it based on the creek.
So, we don't have minimums in our multifamily zone that says that you have to do at least this many.
Yeah.
We do consider this project, even though it's built as single-family, it's appropriate for the site. It's at a density that's appropriate in the neighborhood and, you know, it is the new hybrid probably that we may see more of.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Mr. Maude?
I'm actually going to yield until public comment.
Okay. I have just two questions. I'll talk about the first one, it was, already been talked a little bit, my interest on the creek. And let me preface it by saying, I'm pretty familiar with that area of the creek. I live about three blocks up, upstream. And actually, many of the residents that live down that area are more familiar with it. I've been in many of their yards, starting at about where the medical centers are or the dental offices. As you get past that, the creek does make some pretty significant turns. One I would call the hairpin turn at the Laguna Seca racetrack. It actually almost comes back. And as I visited the site itself here on Prospect, it almost ends, you know, in the middle of that property where all that turns are. But having lived on a creek, I know that, we talked about top of bank, but I, I could talk about center of creek. You get a storm with five feet of water that's going through at 20 miles an hour or whatever, I'm guessing at, at those figures. But storms do change significantly. There is significant erosion on the property and at the end of Prospect. So, first question, well, I have a question, well, actually, a question and a recommendation. The question would be, from a funding point of view, any repair, there is pretty, what I would call serious erosion on the street and on the property. Who would actually, you know, get that to a stabilization factor? Who would pay for that? And the second one is a little of a recommendation. When we do plant trees, I think you use the term native trees, can we also add to that, if it makes sense, with our arborist trees that would also be very successful with erosion control? And there are some, we know there are trees that are terrible on it, but there are probably also some trees that are very good, good with that. So, my question and then the recommendation, if you could please pass that on. So, on the question, who, who pays for any erosion improvements that would need to be made?
I know we talked about environmentally appropriate stabilization such as gabion baskets, but Ed would like to speak to that as well.
All right. So, what happened, of course, we hired our soils engineer to do a soils study for the site. And after that, we met with city staff in planning and engineering, and they recommended that we hire a geologist to look at the creek bank and its, how stable or unstable it was. And of course, we paid a fee to the city for, to have a peer review done on that, and they concurred. And during that study period of, the geologic study period for the creek bank, was determined that there was three areas that would need to be repaired. Some with a gabion cage and some with jute netting and some native planting that is drought tolerant and native to the area. So, that's what we would be doing, is implementing the recommendations that were discussed by the geologist and plus some additional recommendations that came from the peer review that was done by the city. So, that's like one document that will be implemented at the creek bank.
Okay. And that cost would be borne by?
Us.
Us, okay, great.
And then just if it would help, just to note that we've, we've been in business for over 25 years, almost 26. I myself, I'm an architect, and we've worked along creek banks many times. Les Garros Creek, La Salamitas Creek, and then several Santa Clara Valley water channels. So, we're very familiar with the process.
I'm sure you would agree, this, that, this is pretty challenging, that 100 yards, 200 yards prior to that.
It is true.
It does whip around different ways.
What I like about what we're doing in comparison to, let's say, other areas in San Carlos is that we will have an association that will learn about the creek, that will have recommendations and rules and regulations as to how to deal with the creek versus individual homeowners that are up and below the creek. So, I feel like our area is going to be well protected for sure because of these conditions versus just somebody doing it.
Great, thank you. And the second question, last question, Ms. Nelson, could you qualify, in, in, in looking at the site map itself, of course, it was commented that these homes will each have a two-car garage. It appeared to me, and I'd like to have you clarify this, it looks like five of the seven have driveways, what I would call adequate-sized driveways to park another two cars, but two do not. I think it was number, unit two and number seven, the way the roadway comes in. But anyway, just to get open in a question, I mean, or the other main question is, how many, does every home have two driveways? Two, two garage parking and two driveways, or are there some, is there some limitation on a couple of these? As I've, appeared to see.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I'm, I'm sorry I didn't point these out as I went through this because we did discuss this earlier and I just neglected my notes. I'm sorry. So, there are three on-site shared parking spaces, one here, one here, and one up there.
Okay.
There are two new places created at the terminus of Prospect Street.
So, two new to a total of what then?
Three, total for seven units plus each.
No, no, so at the end of Prospect, you're, you're saying two additional, and so what is there now?
There, there is nothing that's really legally created that people do park.
Well, there's, there's three cars parked there today. So, can I say three?
So, there's two.
Going from three to, three illegal to two legal?
Well, there'll be sidewalk improvements and, yeah, there'll be two, two dedicated parking.
So, I can make the conclusion we'll have about the same amount of parking at the end of Prospect?
Yes.
Close, okay.
Each house has a two-car garage and there will be CCNRs which require those to be used for cars only. And that, as Mr. Dowell has suggested, there's an association on-site who will have to self-monitor that. We measured, scaled out these driveways. The longest one's related to, how, six? That's only 15 feet, so the VW or the Mini Cooper could fit there, but you could not really dedicate that.
So, the longest is, is small?
The longest is 15 feet, as more standard would be 20.
Okay.
So, and the, it is a fire aisle, so there's no opportunity to park on this driveway. So, people will have to self-regulate themselves to park in their garage.
Okay, so you're saying there is, out of the seven homes, and what is the total number of cars that could park in the driveway?
Zero.
Is zero. Okay, I just want, I know, I know, I wanted to clarify that. Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Okay, so now we'll, again, we'll move to public comment. I have three speaker cards, and anybody else that would like to speak, come on up. Get some speaker cards there on the table in the back on the side there. But we'll start off with, again, if you have any comments, questions, whatever, this is a time, try to limit your time to about two minutes, let you go a little bit more than that, but around two minutes. Louis Boris, Michael Erbs, and John Reese. I will start off with those. So, Mr. Boris, welcome. Welcome to come up. And if Michael could get ready after, Mr. Boris, that would be great, and so forth. Welcome, Lou.
Hi, Randy. Mr. Mayor, city councilman, staff members, my name is Lou Boris. I live at 1828 Carmelita, San Carlos. I'm at the end of the cul-de-sac, going down toward the dead end there. I'm on the left-hand side. So, my house actually borders the back end there on the dentist, I mean, I'm further down than the dentist, but that's the general area. I'm on the back end, it borders the back end of the creek there and also goes around the side of my property, the left, the right-hand side facing my house, and then meanders around toward the 665 project. I'm addressing the Maryville project and I've gone to two of the meetings and one of them I was unable to go to. I, I have to commend Ed and his people in what they have done. I mean, we were very dissatisfied and we spoke many times about that 20 or 21 project unit that was going to be three stories high and there was no buffer zone between the, between the single-family residential and the multifamily. So, we are pleased that they've made every effort, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, to try to work with the neighbors in, in how their properties are impacted by this. So, I commend them and them working with the city to do so. I think they've got, to my feeling anyhow, about 90% of what we like and what we've talked about, but I still have two major concerns. One of them is still the parking. Parking on Prospect is just absolutely bad. I mean, I mean, I'm sure all of you have been down that street and every time we have a project that comes on, this is going to be our last project because there's no more lots on there. But, you know, for the last five years, when the two projects came up before on the left-hand side of this project, I mean, we were there and we were told, well, I mean, it's gone too far. They've had architect plans and everything's drawn up and, and you're just a little late and, but the next project that comes up, and we're going to address this problem and, and we'll go from there. Well, that, the one was built two away from there, now the next one was built right next to there, now we're down to the last project and we still have the problem. And every time they have a problem like this, a project goes up, we have more and more parking spaces that are spilled out over onto the street. I know we have two and a half parking spaces to each one of the units. And as you pointed out, we have zero parking because of the fire lanes on the inside there. So, we have a total of five parking spaces, three of them and two of them on the end, which I just found out today that they were going to have. So, I guess, I, I don't know what other way we can get some more parking other than, I know that they're, they're, they're doing a, what do you want to call it?
Louis, if you could wrap up maybe about a half a minute, maybe your key points, is that what?
Okay, no, but I'll, I'll try as I can.
We got speakers here waiting, huh?
Okay. They're going for a. They're going for a, what do you want to call it?
EC.
Yeah, in other words, they're asking for like a permit or a variance, okay, to do, so I don't know, is there any way that there could be some type of variance, instead of a path all the way on there, to have a path, I mean, to have that, instead of building a path there, put some kind of a screen there, and have four or five parking places that butt up against the creek there, to get more parking, to have it, don't spell out. Now, I'll get down to the last thing that I have, and the last thing that I have is that path. And that is, when we went to the different meetings, we talked about, they had the fence on the, they had the path, and then they had the fence on the inside of the path. So the path was along the top of the creek. So we talked about that, and we kind of agreed that they thought, well, that wouldn't be a bad idea, keep the fence on the outside so that it would encompass the thing, because it's not for a public right-of-way or a path for people to go in there, it's for the people in the project. I agree with that, I'm okay with that, but I'm not okay with the fence, so I'd like to have the fence moved back on the outside, which we kind of agreed when we talked on the other meetings. And just one other thing.
Make it clear.
Yeah, okay.
Please.
Gavin, I talked with him, he said, the city didn't make the, didn't tell the builders where to put the fence, it was the builders, it's up to the builders where they want to put it. So I'd like to ask them to reposition that fence and have the path on the inside of the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boris.
Welcome. Thank you, Mayor, and City Councilman, and everyone else. So I'm Michael Erbs, I live on the house, the lot, on the other side of the creek, most directly impacted by this development. As Randy said, it's interesting territory down over the creek. I do want to commend the developers, Ed and his team, as a far superior project, a transition based on what we were looking at before, facing before with the 20-unit condo complex. And they have gone, I think, done a great job in soliciting input and feedback and working with us for mitigation. So we are going to be working with them, hopefully, on some screening on our side of the creek, to replace many of the trees that are being taken off, and we'll try to put them on our side, and then some of the neighbors as well, to provide additional screening, so we appreciate them. And I think it was directly some of the feedback we provided at one of the earlier meetings, that they reduced the size, particularly the height of unit number two. So Matt, thanks for being aware of our concerns there, and we do want to make sure that does stay under the, as low, you know, in the perfect world, we'd love it if this stayed undeveloped in a single-family home, but we, you know, recognize it's R3 zoning, and this is certainly better than we'd wind up with, so I do want to appreciate what they've done. Just as long as I got a few minutes here, or a few seconds left, I just want to point out one thing that you were talking about, erosion of the creek, something I, maybe you can have somebody look at it for the city, but the area just outside this development, right here, I believe that probably city-owned property at the end of Prospect, there's the master bay tree for that whole area is there, and it was vandalized, or there was a fire many years ago. The whole thing is being undermined from underneath, it's going to fall into the creek, it's a mammoth. Are we talking 30-foot diameter, 40-foot diameter? It's huge. And if you look at where all that rushing waters come underneath, and that I imagine is city property, so someone might want to take a look about something, because that's going to fall onto our property, but I mean, it's also going to clog the creek when it does fall over. But, Matt, it's not, nothing to do with this development, but just so you're aware, I'm not sure what's going to happen when they start maybe putting those parking places in Prospect, if that's going to impact that giant bay laurel tree there.
Yeah, well, that's important, that's the mayor's house.
Yeah.
Kidding, kidding for the record.
I do want to thank, again, the developers, I think they have done a good job. I mean, if I lived on Prospect, I'd be concerned about parking, but I'll be selfish, and I'm concerned about the visual aspects, and they've done a great job in working with the neighbors and mitigating that.
Thank you very much for coming, speaking. John Reese? Hi, John, welcome.
Welcome.
And anybody else that would like to speak on this, yeah, get a speaker card there, filled out for us, thank you.
Good evening, City Mayor and Council, appreciate the time. My name is John Reese, I'm a resident of San Carlos, and I've worked in the profession of real estate broker in this city for 28 years. I've reviewed the plan for 665 Prospect Street, and find the approach, density, the design, and layout appropriate for the site. I understand the site did have higher density with a former developer, and I am pleased to see that the applicant has reduced that density to produce a design that considers the surrounding neighbors, the surrounding neighborhood, and the uses of the lot and the trees. I feel the developer has done a superior job and an excellent job with the design of this project, from using the materials and outside colors and everything else that they've proposed, and I support this, and I believe will be a wonderful addition to our city. As a caveat to this, it seems as though parking is an issue, and we talk about the five extra spaces that are created by the developer, other than the two-car parking garages. So with a develop like this, and I see that there's 14 spaces, actually, two spaces per house, plus the additional five spaces, this is adequate for this development, and I think it'll have very little impact on Prospect Street and the other homes in the area, because most people now are downsizing the size of their garages and their vehicles, and we don't see people having three and four cars anymore. The CCNRs would also inhibit the parking situation. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you there, John. Anybody else would like to speak on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay. The public comment is closed. Okay, so now we'll have some discussion of council. Again, if you have any other questions to ask staff, or anybody else here, please do so, or comments, feelings, who wants to go first here?
I'll be fairly quick, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that when a public comment comes up, that everybody is commending the developer, so that's, that's great news, and I appreciate the public outreach. The one thing I would love to see is that more of the materials being used for this construction are locally sourced. We happen to have some great people in downtown San Carlos who would love to supply you, so would hope that as applicable as possible, local vendors and local materials are used. Pass that on, Yilf.
Wow, that's it?
Yep.
Great, quiet night for you. Good. Who else?
Yes, I'll go next, to echo Councilman Amant's sentiments about the threat that you have a development in this town, when, A, the crowd is the small, and B, all three speakers commend the developer in doing the public outreach you did. I brought up earlier in my questions about the density issue, because I served on the General Plan Committee, and one of the things we talked about was stepping down from high density to single-family residences. And I appreciate what the developer has done, going from three stories next to the multifamilies to two stories, and then you have a creek, and then you have the one-story, single-family residence. That's been very understanding of the different dynamics between both neighborhoods, and that's good to see. I'm glad that we went from the 21 units now down to this, it's a much more manageable number, and it's much more respective of the neighborhood across the creek. I think in this, in this day and age, especially in this town, parking's always going to be an issue, no matter where we ever put a development in this town, parking's always going to be an issue. I live in HOA at the top of Crestview, and I have three cars, my wife and I, and we have one spot, so one of our cars is in storage, and it's, you know, it's a pain and it costs us more money, but we understand it, you just don't want a car sitting on the street 24 hours a day. So, you know, I understand that there will be an association, so I hope it's heavily monitored, because the last thing you want is the rest of the neighborhood to be impacted, because someone does have that third car and feels the need to leave it on the street, or someone has a 16-year-old who just got their license, and suddenly there's a couple more cars. But other than that, I think it's a fantastic development, I really, I do like all the mitigation that was put in, it really seems like the outreach was really great with the neighborhood. I saw a bunch of the concerns from the beginning, how they've changed the development, and how that's been reflective in that. And to echo my other councilmen's thought, yes, shop locally, I noticed that the colors are from Kelly Moore, and that's a local company, so that's great. But, yeah, I understand, I think we're going to have some other amendments to this development down the dais here, and I'd be definitely willing to discuss those, but I think, I think this is the kind of development, the kind of process that we want to see in this town, so I'm fine with that, and once again, well done.
Great, thank you. Mr. Klein?
Mr. Kirkup? So actually, the concerns I had and that I brought in were addressed, so I don't have any amendments. The only thing that, well, I'd say two things. Number one, to the developer, thank you very much for bringing a very nice project to our city, I appreciate it very much. I think, actually, this project is reflective of most of the development that went on in our R3 zoning post-World War II, which was more of apartments, but built around this similar type of thing of a vehicular courtyard, if you will, something that can be used for cars to get in and out, but at the same time, I know I lived in one of these, the first place I lived in San Carlos was one of these apartment complexes that were designed that way, and what we all did, especially in the summer months, was use that vehicular area, if you will, for barbecues, and, you know, we'd bring our lawn chairs out and sit in that area and have a good time on a Saturday. So, and I see that same type of thing happening here, I can, I can see little kids riding their bikes around and using that protected courtyard. This is something that I'm very interested in. I mentioned this kind of development when we were going through our general plan, it wasn't really picked up on, but this idea of clustered residential is very popular in Seattle and parts of Oregon, and it works very well. So I'm glad to see it here, coming to San Carlos, and hopefully, your project might be a model for some changes to our general plan in the future. I like it very much, and I also appreciate very much, even though I had questions about the creek, and I am concerned about it as a public repairian way, I think your approach to it, and I agree with you, the more you invite people into the environment, the more they appreciate it and are willing to take care of it, as opposed to it being something that's over a fence, you can't see, it ends up with a lot of garbage, and that sort of thing. I like your, your bringing it into the site and making it something interactive. The only thing I don't agree with in the process, but I don't think I'm going to get anything out of my fellow council members on this, is I am not one for the housing, low-income housing fund. I think all of this is doing is adding $50,000 or more to your housing costs, that's going to be passed on to the people who try to purchase, and there could be owners who might be able to afford this, but that extra $50,000 is going to put it out of their reach. And I think there are more of those kind of people than the one individual who's going to be helped by some low-income housing unit that we're going to build somewhere. I would rather see us encouraging development like this, that, to me, is what eases the housing crunch, not the city being involved in some kind of program that feels good, but I don't think is effective. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirkup. Mr. Casselli?
A couple of things, Mr. Wild, while you were gone, possibly, we talked about, the gentleman, I don't know if you heard the gentleman across the way talk about the end of Prospect Street. And I walked out today, too, and, boy, it looks like, that's why I talked about the degradation, that really looks degraded down there. Is the city going to be able to repair that? Is that, or is that, we're not going to hopefully force the developer to do that, because it's really not part of his development.
Well, I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know.
Well, that's an honest answer?
Yeah, I haven't looked at that situation.
Okay, well, if you get a chance, I really appreciate that you would go down there and take a look at it, because I kind of think that, Mr. Erbs has a point, that it's pretty degraded down at the end of that street, and when we go to put in those two parking spaces, hopefully, we can address some of that, and maybe Ms. Nelson knows some stuff about, she starts to rise.
One thing to clarify, the parking spaces are actually there right now.
No, I know they are, no, I know they are, but what I'm saying is, when we make them official and draw a little line or do something with it, we're going to come to the end of that, where those, where that wood is, beyond that wood, it sort of drops off, and...
Well, I'd like to represent that we're not making the developer, but we're working cooperatively so that the developer helps us make the end of the street.
Okay, well, that'd be great, I appreciate, thank you, Mr. Developer, Mr. Dow, for doing that. But anyway, that was the only point that Mr. Erbs brought up. And Mr. Boris's comment about parking, and I can certainly appreciate that, because as much as we would love to believe that there aren't going to be any children there, or anyone who's 16 years old, as Mr. Reese spoke to, I apologize, I must disagree, parking's going to be an issue. But, having said that, even if we tried to move, here I am designing, move all those houses out, as I understand it, that walkway is in the 25-foot range, is that correct? Ms. Nelson? The walkway they're proposing, in the back?
Yes, the walkway and the fence is behind the walkway, and it's ironed.
Right, but the walkway is in part of the 25 feet.
Yes, it is the...
So we couldn't eliminate the walkway, is what I'm getting at, unfortunately, and, you know, if we could, yeah, great, but we can't, and so we can't move things, and so it is going to be an issue that the association's going to have to deal with, and actually, the neighbors, those seven neighbors are going to deal with, more than the people in the street, I think, because people are going to have extra cars. So I just make that statement, that it'd be nice, but somebody's going to have a child, and somebody's eventually going to be 16. So I would like to commend the developer, too, for the paperwork that I saw, not, I didn't delve into it as much as my colleague, he's more the designer, I did this for a couple of weeks in my lifetime, 27 years, and so I appreciate a beautiful project that was developed, everything looks like it's supposed to work the way it is. Again, I think, I would hope that it would be a successful project, it certainly appears to be, relative to the fact of there were lots of people here five years ago, or four years ago, when the other folks were here, and I don't see them here tonight, so obviously you must have done a good job on communicating that information. Other than that, I believe that's all I had, except when we get to the motions, I'll have a couple of questions for that.
So I, too, the way to compliment neighbors and developers, hey, it's pretty exciting to have almost up to a 3,000-square-foot, you know, quality home, creek setting, parking I'll talk about, that's the only thing I'm going to be talking about, is a concern, quiet street, no traffic at all, and you're four, you're five blocks away from downtown, that's a dream for 100% of the people, it's just gorgeous. So thank, thank you for that, a tremendous value for our city. Parking, bear with me here, I'll talk a little bit about, I think, what I see as a pretty serious problem. I have one crazy idea that Deborah or our city attorney could be thinking about, that I'll present at the end. Most, this whole concept of cluster homes and density, and big homes, we are going to have parking. You know, one way to solve, you know, the car problem and the traffic problem is to provide that much parking, and people will eventually be irritated with that they can't park their car and lessen it. But on the other hand, this is a location where Prospect, as a couple of the public comment people commented on, it's already serious. I mean, there's no parking on Prospect. And most clusters, you could go north, south, east, west, they're at the end of a cul-de-sac, they can't go anywhere, they have to go up Prospect, there's nothing. If you continue a block on Prospect, there's nothing. If you go left, now you're on a busy street, making a left turn, on San Carlos Avenue, within the next two blocks, there's nothing. Even if you turn on Cordillares, the first street, there's nothing for two blocks. If you go right towards downtown, a little bit, a little bit of parking on San Carlos Avenue, depending on weekend or weekday, so then you say, I'll just go down to Cedar and make a left and right, there's apartments, there's no parking. So while this would be a cluster that everybody's got to put up with, it is really, I think, serious for everybody who lives there, and we will be impacting people not near, I mean, these are people that are going to be parking two to three blocks away to find something. So I have that only one concern. I do have, I don't want to penalize or the homeowners for the cost or the developer, because we could say, it'd be ridiculous to say, build six homes, use one of the properties to park, I'm just guessing, eight cars, you know, a million-dollar value for eight cars, that's only $125,000 to get each parking space, that's crazy, I would never ask you to do that, don't worry. But that's what it is. For all the reading I've done on parking, I may be a little old on this information, but a parking stall is expensive, I think it's around... I think it's around $25,000 to $35,000. The parking place in front of your house, that's about the fair market value of a parking space, not $125,000. So that does not work. I would not undo that penalty to you or the new homeowner. One idea, and maybe Mr. Rubens or Ms. Nelson could address this, and it's not my idea, it's an idea from when I was on planning commission. We had a business downtown, we had a parking problem. Part of the conditional use permit is we put in a condition that said that they would have to negotiate and contract out for off-site parking with a mender. I mean, with, and actually what it was, it's the, it was the mortuary way down on the El Camino, they had a huge parking lot, they never used it except, you know, here and there. And so they basically had, you know, five parking spaces with five signs that say, people at this business or employees could park here. When I go back to those locations, right next to this, we have dental offices. And if you're going to use parking and party, it's on the weekend. I believe the dental offices are empty, that parking lot is unused. If you go up Prospect to the second block, there's a dental office there, too, with a huge parking lot. There are other parking lots, I could just think of just those two right away. And so could we put a condition to say, part of the homeowners' association is they have to provide up to eight, I'm saying eight, I mean, sorry, seven, seven for, one for each home, off-site parking with a contract with signage to negotiate that to be added. It doesn't blow the project, and I think it is at a point where we need to be creative with cluster housing in this environment, because parking, to me, is so serious. What's the legal opinion of that, Mr. Rubens? Can we do something like that?
Well, I think it has to do with the findings of approval. If you're having trouble making the findings of approval for the project without more parking, there might be something there. Our ordinance don't usually require off-site parking, and I think, I may be recollecting this wrong, but I think that that project you're talking about involved a variance that this project doesn't, I think this project meets the parking requirements. So we'd have to, you'd have to look at the issue of whether you can make the findings for approval of the project because of the impact on parking or traffic. It's probably tied into the mitigated negative deck for the project, too, and whether or not you can approve that with the parking situation there. And then there's always in these circles--
I can ask one comment on that. Do we, when we build homes, do we, as part of our city coding, that we have to request that or require that they provide a driveway? Is that part of our city building? Ordinance? I mean, I'm just relating, because what we're doing, this is different. This is our first time, not first time in cluster home, but kind of our first experience with cluster homes.
I'd have to look that up in the Green Book. I do not think so. We require two covered parking places--
Oh, really? Good.
--for a single-family home, and we also have a setback requirement, so the driveway sits in the setback.
Okay.
If the garage were at the property line, and there are some circumstances in hillside locations where that occurs, there is no driveway, the two onsite parking places are provided in the garage.
Excellent, thank you. That's an important answer.
And that's it.
Mr. Rubens, can I back any other comment you started with him?
Well, I was, I was just going to comment on that, in any development like this, the parking standards that we have in place take into general account the parking demand. And of course, there may be circumstances and individual, not related necessarily to the development itself, but to the people who are going to live in the development, that you might have parking shortages that develop from time to time. But I think we, on this particular project, I'd like to review our ordinances to make sure, if that's the direction the council wants to go, whether that we can look at a requirement of off-site parking. But Deborah might have the answer to that question.
I was just going to say one other thing, that in a single-family residential, the two covered parking places don't also come with a CCNR that says, you have to put your car in the garage, not your stuff. Pardon me for being so colloquial, but we don't, we don't say what you have to do with that garage, we just say you have to have two covered parking places.
Great. So this was a good discussion, so maybe I could just change from a condition. I'll just throw it out then as not recommending that, although it might be, and when you're homeowners' association and people get rolling with this thing, that might be an opportunity at their choice to leave some space locally or with an abacus, because we do, in this city, need to share. And when you, the example is you put a movie theater in a shopping center where all the stores are closed and everybody goes to the movie. You know, the dental offices, when everybody goes home to the dental offices, people, and there's no one there on a weekend, you know, sharing is what we need to do more of. And it could be a great opportunity, improve your parking, improve the relationship with the neighborhood, and it probably is not going to cost very much, so. Mr. Grocott, you had a comment on that?
Yes.
Thank you for bearing with me on that.
There are a couple of projects similar to this. They're not creekside, but they are cluster-style housing. One is more of where you have, they're more townhomes. They're, in other words, you have a unit, a house essentially that's attached to another house, so they have a shared wall. But in Menlo Park, there's a couple of these. I have a friend that lives in one, and I've visited their place mostly on the weekends. And they have a similar type of thing with the garages, where, I believe anyways, that they have to use them for parking. They can't, as Deborah said, put their stuff in the garage. And there does not seem to be a parking issue there at that, at those two locations I'm thinking of. And I think it's partly because when you move into such a complex, there is an understanding of what's going on. And the one time I visited this friend, and they were having, they were having an event on the weekend, a celebration, and, you know, there's enough parking around, and like the doctor's office type example that you mentioned, I think people get, they learn about that, or you're told when you come, here's some places where you can park. And I think we have experience with that, too, in San Carlos, where we have a couple of places where even the schools, without a contract, it's just kind of an agreement, they don't get into all the legal ramifications of it, but they allow parking on their school site. So I think we have enough of that. I think your idea is a good one, but I don't see us necessarily putting it in writing. I think it's just something that's, could be an understanding.
I agree with you. Good, thank you. Okay. With that--
Scared you, huh?
Scared you.
It would be scary, he's coming to a doctor's office and parking at the mortuary.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You didn't think it was going to be a real walkover, did you, Mr. Dow?
Are there any other comments from city council?
You have a public comment.
Uh, Lou, this is something important, would you like to speak? Please, come on up. He's asking about the fence. That's a question.
He was asking about the fence. It's set up on the inside now, and you wanted it on the outside.
Yeah. So there's been, so we didn't get any reaction here from city council on that?
Well, I'll make a comment. I mean, I understand, I mean, it's from my perspective, and again, this is just personal. If I owned a home, I'd like to have, I'd like, I mean, maybe there's two fences, but I'd certainly like to have a property line designated in my backyard where it ended. And I think, I assume that, Mr. Dow, that's what you're doing, you're putting the fence up at the property line for each home. Is that correct?
Yes. The fence issue has changed a little bit, if I can explain. In our first meeting, that area was actually open to everyone. And then the neighbors were concerned that they didn't want it open to everyone, they wanted it only for the homeowners. So we've changed it, we've closed it, so it's only for the homeowners. Then we discussed the idea of putting the fence at the end of the creek bank, and that didn't seem to be the right thing to do. As Mr. Crockett said, it's like, we wanted to make it present and be there, so you're aware of it, not kind of hide it and create a zone where, oh, I'll throw my stuff here, but this is not mine. We wanted it to be there, so everybody's aware of it. So that's why we actually moved the fence back, it's a metal fence, to where the homes are.
The property line, basically, yeah. Okay.
Great, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, so, Ms. Nelson, if you could kind of keep us here, we have each of these first mitigated negative declaration or resolution on that, or a motion on that?
So this would be your motion that's on the screen?
Yeah, okay, beautiful. There we go.
Through the chair, could I ask one quick question? You mentioned some modifications that you had thrown up there, T4s, D5s, T7s, whatever. Is that now, Mr. Grocott?
Well, I thought when we got to motion number three, I'd ask--
It's motion number three that we're going to talk about that?
--council member Grocott if he wanted to include those or not.
Okay, so it's on three. I'm just asking what motion it's on.
Those things have been addressed, as far as I'm concerned.
All right, so we don't necessarily have any modifications sent on any of these?
All right, then we won't. So when we get to three, I have in parenthetical as amended, and whoever reads it won't read as amended.
Okay.
Okay.
I just wanted to check to see where it was.
Okay, can I hear a motion on a mitigated deck?
It's right up there for you.
So I'd like to move that we adopt a resolution certifying a mitigated declaration, including mandatory findings of significance and a mitigation monitoring and reporting program associated with the proposed development of seven detached residential units at 665 Prospect Street.
We do one at a time, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Here's a second.
Through the chair, resolution number, I apologize, what number was it?
Ninety-three.
Do we have to read, this is, that's at the top? I apologize. Read it, legally read the thing at the top, even though that's written a little differently?
Wait.
Greg, I'm sorry, I just didn't want to do it wrong.
The language, you know, to approve the resolution, you don't have to read exactly the language on it.
Okay, so that's sufficient to what's written here?
That's right.
Second.
Question. Mr. Mayor, according to, we'll hear the resolution that's in our packet. So I just want to point out on line four, residential is misspelled and certifying is misspelled, so if we can have that, we're not going to get this resolution back, not like the ordinance, so we'll have to reread it, so.
I forget how we already caught those earlier.
You're saying you don't want to second a misspelled resolution here?
Good.
I'm more than willing to do it, so I'll second, yeah.
Okay, we got that change.
Crackerjack.
Did I hear a second?
I already did.
I'm sorry. Your first and second? Row call, please.
Councilmember Maude, Councilmember Grisilli.
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Mayor Royce.
Yes.
Okay. Number two. Someone ready to go?
Mr. Mayor, move that we adopt ordinance number--
Ninety-four.
Ordinance of the city council of the city of San Carlos pursuant to San Carlos Municipal Code, Section 18.104, amending the zoning map and adopting a plan of development including maintenance of areas adjacent to stream channels pursuant to Section 18.144 and conditional exception to subdivision standards pursuant to Section 17.40 for purposes of constructing seven detached residential units with shared common open space at 665 Prospect Street, assessed parcel numbers 050-122-150 and 160.
Through the chair, I apologize, Mr. Technical. Ninety-three was the last one, this is ninety-four, you know, one's a resolution, one's an ordinance. Okay, just want to make sure.
There's two resolutions and one ordinance, correct?
I understand, I just want to make sure--
One's an ordinance.
Are we introducing an ordinance?
Is that the same number?
Are we introducing an ordinance?
I was just going to say, raising my hand over here, that tonight you're--
We're introducing the ordinance.
You're introducing the ordinance.
Right.
Sorry, that's 1424.
That's--
1427.
I apologize, Ms. Bowman, but that's what I was going for.
Got it, thank you.
Where I didn't think that was correct.
Glad I have all this help take care of this.
Yeah, we're working on it for you.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Row call, please.
Councilmember Maude.
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli.
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Mayor Royce.
Yes.
So this motion for the resolution would not include the parenthetical as amended?
That's right, it would not.
Hey, someone wanted to make this motion, to certify the resolution.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion for resolution number--
Ninety-four.
Ninety-four. A resolution of the city council of the city of San Carlos concerning the project at 665 Project, or Prospect Street/Mirabelle Project, assessed as parcel numbers 050-122-150 and -160 for the associated construction of seven detached residential units affirming the actions of the planning commission for a tentative map, architectural review, heritage tree removal, and below-market rate housing plan, and adopting a code-compliant certificate and additional use permit pursuant to San Carlos Municipal Code, Section 18.104.060 and 18.104-070.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, we have a second.
Yes, I know. So I just am going to say again, repeat what I said before, I do not agree with the action of the below-market rate housing, but, Mr. Mayor, for ease of what's going on here, and because I don't think I'd get the votes on it anyways, I'll just go ahead and vote accordingly on this in favor. But for the record, I do not agree with the below-market rate housing agreement.
Appreciate it, Mr. Grocott. Okay. Row call, please.
Councilmember Maude.
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli.
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Mayor Royce.
Yes.
I'll put.
Ms. Nelson, that's it. Congratulations, everybody. Thank you very, very much.
Thanks, thank you.
And for everybody that came to speak on this and your 20 months of work.
Thank you.
You don't want to stay for the citywide traffic mitigation?
It affects your project.
Yeah, I was going to say. It's going to affect your project.
Okay, we are on the third and the last item of the public hearing. This is a consideration of adopting a resolution setting the citywide traffic mitigation impact fee through June 30th, 2011. Mr. Weil?
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Robert Weil, Public Works Director. I thought I'd just kind of get a little bit of background on this. It is a big cost item here for developments such as the one you just approved. For them, this would be, this traffic impact fee would be a $15,000 cost overall to the project. So it's a big expense for development. This fee originated in 2008. The Palo Alto Medical Foundation was before the community, and there were significant cumulative traffic impacts associated with that project. In other words, the project by itself didn't have impacts, but when you took that project and all the other general plan growth that was anticipated at the time, there were cumulative impacts, particularly at the Holly Street and 101 interchange. And the big price tag item on that is that when you're coming from San Carlos and going north towards San Francisco, the ramp doesn't have enough capacity. And so to add that ramp, you have to basically double, add a second lane on that ramp all the way around. And when you do that, you have to take out the northbound loop-off ramp and re-engineer the northbound ramp to be more of a T intersection. So it's just a major cost. And the decision made, was made at that time, that that cost would be appropriately borne by all the development in San Carlos, not just the Palo Alto Medical Foundation. So the development agreement with PAMP says that they will pay any traffic impact fees that are in place at the time they pull their building permits. They haven't pulled any building permits yet, so they're subject to, you know, what we come up with. The basic calculation is you just take the cost of the improvements and you spread it over the number of trips. And so what that amounts to, a year ago, it was $1,313 a trip, and now it's $2,193 a trip. And the difference, there's two differences. One is that the cost of the projects, the projects that are needed to mitigate the traffic impacts are higher. The projects themselves didn't change, but the cost estimates changed. The difference is we hired an engineer between a year ago and today. And the engineer, I asked the engineer to take a look at the cost of that Holly 101 project, and they came back with the project cost, it really gave me huge sticker shock. What we had before was basically done in-house, just, I don't know, really working with rough orders of magnitude, and this is much closer, I think. You asked a question, is this going to happen each year? I believe this should be really incremental changes from now on. We are still designing that project. That project is in the conceptual design phase, and there will be changes as we go through Caltrans approval, but I don't think we're going to see these kind of quantum changes in costs. I sure hope not. There was a question about what if we put the Holly Street eastbound, Holly Street widening eastbound at Industrial Road back into the fee? I took that out mainly because it's no longer needed to mitigate traffic. So under the theory, you only fund what's the mitigations that are needed, I took that project out. At $600,000, if you added that back into the fee, the fee would go up from $2,193 to $2,311. So instead of a 67% increase, it would be a 76% increase. There was questions about will the In-N-Out Burger pay this fee? And the answer is no. Our practice has been that when a development applies for a building permit, the codes that apply when their application is deemed complete and the fees that apply when their application is deemed complete are the ones they pay. Even though it might take six or eight months and things might change, in the meantime, they pay what was in effect when they applied. And so that's the practice in San Carlos, and I would recommend we do that in this case. Their application has already been deemed complete, so they would not pay the increase. I think that's, those are the questions that I had from council prior to the meeting. It's an important program. Some of our neighbors don't have this fee. Belmont doesn't charge a traffic impact mitigation fee, but of the neighbors that do charge it, we're still very competitive. That's not the basis for the fee. You do the fee based on what the costs are, but still you want to remain competitive in the marketplace for developing, attracting good development projects. And I don't think we've priced ourselves out of the market by doing this, as we saw tonight. With that, I'd see if there's any questions, and I would recommend approval.
Questions?
I have a quick question if I could, Mr. Wile, a couple, actually. You have 5,062 trips today that you're estimating. In theory, that could go up if new businesses came in. Let's say across the street from, I'm just giving you the hypothetical, across the street from the medical or the new hospital, someone wants to raise a building and put up something else. Couldn't those trips go up? And then the fee would go down?
The, it's all a model. We're dealing with a model.
I understand.
Yeah.
When, I guess a better question is, when do you look, do you look at the model yearly, semiannually?
I would say if it's a project of such significance that the general plan is amended, that's when you would revisit.
So in effect, if someone just raised a building across and put a 4,000 or 5,000 square foot business in, it probably wouldn't change?
That's correct.
Okay. And the other question I have is, it says here for retail, a current fee for 1,000 square feet is $4,900 and goes to $8,200. So would that be, let's say if I was opening a business on Lowell Street, and I might have 1,000 square feet on Lowell Street?
Well, now remember, if you're just replacing a business, it's already there.
Right, even if it's a different business?
Yeah, even if it's a different business.
Okay.
And you're not changing the use.
Right.
There's no new traffic.
Okay.
So you don't have to pay.
So even though you might have a clothing store turned into a restaurant, no fee?
Restaurant, it could be a different story.
Okay, well, that's why I'm asking.
So, for example, Sheekys went in.
Right.
And there was a, it was an old drugstore that was since closed.
Right.
But we looked and compared what the traffic would generation for the tunnels was, drugstore, pharmacy.
Go ahead.
Cisco, yeah.
That's right.
And what the restaurant was. And actually, the restaurant was lower.
Okay.
So they didn't have to pay a fee.
Okay.
But if it was the other way around?
So depending on the business that goes in on Lowell Street, even though it could or could not have to be affected by a fee?
Right, that's correct.
It all depends.
It all depends.
If there was a vacant lot, which there is at the far, far end, a couple of vacant lots, at least one I know of, if someone built a building there and put in, then certainly this fee would apply.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. So I have.
Any other questions? Or just starting questions? Any questions, Mr. Growcott?
I don't know if this is for Mr. Wile or for us to discuss, but I'm concerned about the magnitude of the increase. And so I guess my only question is, how often do we revisit this? Do we, you know, might we, you know, what if we just did a, I don't know, 40% increase right now and then revisit it, you know, a year later or 18 months later? Because I never like, you know, it's kind of the same thing with the sewer facility we have, where all of a sudden things just, you know, because it hasn't been addressed in such a long time, and all of a sudden we're paying these huge increases as opposed to doing it on a more regular basis and having them be incremental. And I'm just concerned about the 67% figure. Is there any way we can mitigate that and bring it down and step up to maybe that goal over time?
Well, with calls for reviewing once a year, and we have looked at it. You looked at it when it was adopted in 2008, and in 2009 you looked at it. It was a, I want to say about 15% increase then. And then this year, the big sticker shock. And we would intend to look at it each year as it goes. If you were to phase it in over time, the revenue that you lose would have to be made up by someone else.
Yeah.
And it would probably be your redevelopment agency. So I guess, we made sure that Palo Alto Medical Foundation was aware of this change, and maybe, I don't know if there's somebody here to speak to it tonight, but I wouldn't recommend phasing it in. I figured, you know, it's the bad news, let's deal with the bad news, let's bite the bullet and make the change. Because what would happen if you didn't do that, if you deferred that full increase for another year, is you'd miss a slice of revenue, and that would have to be, come from somewhere, because you really need to build these projects.
I have no questions. Mr. Ahmad?
I guess, question number one, how much money have we collected through this mechanism to date?
Only $47,000.
Colossal. So the effect of the old fees, I mean, nobody's really seen any of this.
Right.
I guess the only other thing I would like to see, Mr. Mayor, is a better discussion or more clarification of when the fee is applied. It sounds like when somebody pulls a building permit, that's when we need to apply the fee as opposed to, it sounds a little bit random at this point.
No, it's paid when the building permit's pulled.
And that is by code, or is that just by practice?
I think that's state law.
Well, our code also, 8.50.060, talks about when the traffic impact fee is going to be paid. It says in that section, "The traffic impact fee shall be paid in full to the city before the first building permit is issued." It says issued in our code. Sounds like the practice has been, which I think is normal, that's when you normally collect the fees. You're collecting them in advance, you're collecting for the planning and all the other things, so it's just collected at the beginning. So I think that's the basis for the practices. Here's the certainty of the fee.
If I may, through the mayor, I believe what Councilmember Ahmad is asking is about what timeframe locks the fee in place. The fees are paid at the time that the building permits are issued, which is towards the end of the process. But my understanding is the fee, the payment that's made is based on the fee that was in place when the application was made, and that is not necessarily typical in every city. So maybe you could speak to that a little bit.
So to that extent, when we've got major projects that have grandfathered fees, I mean, we know that planning processes can take years. So we move forward, we now have better costing on what these projects for traffic mitigation are going to be, but we're going to be paying fees that were two years old and orders of magnitude off, doesn't strike me as serving anybody. So to that extent, I would like to see if there is a fee that is applied for traffic mitigation, that it is closer to what the fee should actually reflect. And right now, you're telling me that, well, yeah, In-N-Out could have some significant traffic impacts, but hey, they're grandfathered in. And that's, that bothers me.
I want to clarify, make sure I'm clear on what I said. It's when the building permit is applied for, not when the planning application is applied for. So, for example, this project we had here tonight, their next step will be to file a final map, and there'll be probably a year in that, and there'll be a lot of improvement plans that are done. So it'll be a year till they apply for a building permit. They would pay the fees that are in effect when they actually apply for, after they filed their final map, and only then can they apply for a building permit, and that's, they would apply, they would pay the fees that were in effect when they applied for the building permit.
So what I would like to do is, you know, this is more of an offline request, I would like to find out just, how long is that process? And I'd like to just get a better feel of how much time can elapse, because if there are new fees, I'd like them applied as opposed to grandfathering in old fees and waiting some considerable period of time. The only other thing I have got, Mr. Wile, is this is now just a better estimate.
Right.
I don't believe that we're going to see deflation occurring anytime soon, so the costs are going to go up. I've got to believe these fees are going to go up next year. What work are you going to do between here and next year when we review this that will give us a better idea of what these fees should be?
Oh, well, we have that project actively being studied right now, the Holly 101 project. And the Britton Industrial Project is actually preliminarily designed, we have a good cost estimate on that. But the Holly 101 project, Mark Thomason Company is San Carlos company here, they're doing the preliminary design on that, we're having Caltrans review our project study report. So, and part of their scope is to fine-tune this cost estimate, and so we'll have a number we can really be confident in within the next year.
Last question, if there is a shortfall in the budgeting for these projects, that comes out of Fund 25, is that RDA funds, where is that coming from?
Well, it could come from either of those two sources.
Either or both?
Yeah. It could come from, it's conceivably come from grants, gas tax, a number of different fund sources for transportation. And so, yeah.
Okay. Do you have any question?
Nope.
I'm ready to go. I have maybe a comment and a recommendation, but no questions. So any other questions? Okay, discussion or thoughts, comments?
Well, really, discussion isn't, I didn't have any questions, because I get it, but, you know, it's a hard one to swallow, because this kind of feels like if you're the last one to show up to the party, you have to buy the drinks. You know, we've had all these traffic problems up before 2008, and then 2008 rolled around, and everyone else now has to pay for the projects, as opposed to all the people who are already here. It's just the people who tipped us over the scale. And so I know, I understand, it's one of those necessary evils, and we probably should have been doing this for a long time, but, you know, come up with new ideas, and so people get hit a little hard, and we haven't raised, obviously, remotely close to enough money to do all these improvements that we need to do and needed to do before some of these developments even came in. So, you know, I'm going to be voting in favor of it tonight, because, I mean, it is one of those necessary evils, but it's not fun to vote for stuff like this. You know, this is, I mean, it really does feel like the last one in the door gets stuck with the bill. But it's just, if someone doesn't pay the bill, then, well, we're all stuck anyway, so that's it.
The other thing I'd like to say, I'm sorry, if you were finished.
No, I'm finishing.
You know, it says, this is the estimate, by the way, as Mr. Wile could, would, I guess, verify. This is the estimate, 5,062. These projects aren't on, a lot of these projects don't exist yet.
Yeah.
So what's going to happen, in my mind, is if we're fast enough, or maybe we're not, and, correct me if I'm wrong, we're going to want to build this project before possibly these 5,062 trips come up.
Right.
So we're going to be short. Just to make sure that everybody understands, we're going to be short.
Oh, yeah.
And we're going to have to, I mean, I shouldn't say we're going to be, it could well happen that we are short, and we're going to have to come out of pocket, sort of prepay it, and then we'll get paid back. So I just want to make sure everybody's aware that this isn't all, you know, talking about to the last of the party and all the rest of it, they hadn't even started, they're out there.
There's still a line waiting.
No, I understand.
No, I get it.
Just make sure everybody's aware of this.
To the mayor, may I make one thing clear for the record? This is a legal record, I want to make sure it's clear. The, mathematically, the intersections that we're studying have an adequate level of service now. So even though they may feel congested, under traffic engineering standards, they meet the level of service now. So, you know, the people who, and those improvements have been paid for by the people that live here now, or their predecessors, the people that bought the houses, the people that pay taxes. So what we're dealing with is the effects of growth and pushing those intersections and interchanges over the edge, and then bringing them back from going over the edge with these costs. It's an important principle to preserve in the development of, development impact fees. There was another thought I had, there's something else I was going to say, but that's an important point to make.
I just-
Mr. Growcott? Other comments?
A comment to Mr. Ahmad's concern, and I think the way we do it in this city is fair, because when you bring a project in for a building permit, that process, depending on the scope of the work, could be anywhere from four weeks to a couple of months. Usually, they aren't, unless it's a really big project, getting your building permit doesn't take more than a couple of months, shouldn't. But it's not fair to, you know, you come in, you apply, and you're told, these are your fees, unless council takes an action and the fees change. So it's just, I mean, it's just fair to the business, whoever the applicant is, to know what those fees are coming in and not be told this could change during the two months. You know, it's going to take us two months to approve your project, and during those two months, fees could change. So I think what we have is fine. I understand your concern that we get caught, you know, somehow, but it's not like it's, typically, it's not like it's a year or something like that.
That's good to know. So I have one, maybe slight recommendation here on this before I vote, and it deals with a one-line item of the widening of Holly Street, what we called the staging area before you cross Industrial. $600,000, we're taking it to zero. To me, what that means is we're getting rid of that line item, and I'm not sure we should be getting rid of that line item. And the basis of that are three points. One is the original study, which was paid by PAMP, Hexagon and Bill Black, or Bob, Bill Black, who was the engineer at that time. I was on the planning commission, it was part of the environmental impact, it was actually a formal EIR and approval, that we were going to land a left lane to Industrial, and we were going to do staging on Holly. And so you kind of have to trust that. That's pretty important consultation and approval process that we go through. And now we jump ahead to where we are now, and to me, where we are now, it's, as, you know, Robert said, it's not needed, but to me, it's not formal. You know, we haven't approved the $11 million here. We have a concept of utilizing a left turn lane at that intersection. We have a lot of concepts, we talked about two weeks ago, about zoning, about walking from train station east San Carlos Avenue to the hotel site and things like that. But on this plan, you know, we talked about where traffic would be diverted down east San Carlos Avenue. In other words, this is still, to me, draft. It's good thinking, we're going to try to do good things, but I think we need public input, we need to make sure we budget properly. And again, if, saving a lot of time, just analytically, I have an issue, where right now, we have three lanes for staging, that's where the gas station is. There's a right turn, it gets on South 101, two lanes go straight. So now we are going to a left turn, the right turn, I think, is similar, I may be off on a little bit of this. We have one lane that goes straight, and Mr. Wile, in the beginning, his first comment was, we have to get additional capacity to provide two lanes on the overpass to go northbound. But we're going from two lanes straight to only one lane. So we're not here to discuss that, there's going to be a lot of discussion- So we're not here to discuss that, there's going to be a lot of discussion. My point is, to me, it's draft. We don't think we need it. I think, I'd rather say, I don't know yet. And so I would like to be conservative. Conservative means, is you're conservative on revenue, you're aggressive on expense. I think we need to leave that line item, and it provides us options. Rather than get rid of that thought, or even get rid of that dollar amount, we're already went from five million to, plus six million, to eleven. It's nothing that we're approving, but to impact, it's this ballgame that you got, a couple of you have already talked about, how do we come up with it? And I would approve this and recommend it, with the exception of leaving both the line item and the dollar amount for the widening, to really give us flexibility at that point of time. If there's no interest on that, there's none as an amendment, but that's where I'm coming from.
I'll move the resolution, move to adopt resolution 2010-dash. Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, establishing traffic impact mitigation fees for fiscal to year 2010, 2011.
Second. Okay, any discussion?
I have a question. So is that with or without the mayor's suggestion?
At this point, it's, it's straight.
Right now, it's without, which is fine. I just brought that up.
Just wanted to clarify.
Row call, please.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Royce?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wild. And by, by the way, we're in council now, just want to be very clear, a lot of these original costs that we, we had, a lot of those, you weren't totally responsible for, a lot of those were already in, in place, and we do appreciate the work that you've done here to, to get us something a little more real. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, for the clerk, did we go through the opening and closing of a public hearing on that item?
Good point.
No, we did not.
Okay, so, can we back up here?
Yeah. Thank you very, very much.
I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, now we're going to have to go through that motion all over again.
That's right.
For the, for the, for the, for the clarification.
I think what probably happened is there's no slips on that item, and so, if you don't have any slips, that, but it's a good practice to announce and ask it.
So do you reckon in revoting now?
I think you should re-vote.
Re-vote, okay.
Row call, please.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Royce?
Yes.
Nice catch.
Okay. Item 10, unfinished business is the last on our agenda. There are two items regarding 10A on sewer ordinance, and on 10B, the length of service for commission members. So 10A, consideration of introducing a revised sewer ordinance to replace section 13.05, 13.08 of the San Carlos Municipal Code. Mr. Wild?
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers, Robert Wild, Public Works Director. And we're bringing, I'm bringing back this ordinance that you saw about a month ago, and it's substantially similar to what you saw, except that the one issue that was of concern to the Realtor community, which was the
Lateral.
requirement to inspect sewer laterals upon resale or sale, is, is taken out of this ordinance. And they made a good case, they gave you facts, that you can make a finding that that 2% turnover in properties a year isn't going to get us where we need to go in terms of the sewer lateral inspection, repair, replacement. And the council expressed an interest in being more aggressive with, with the program. Even taking that out, this is a very aggressive ordinance. There's a lot of authority in here, more than the baykeeper, keeper, baykeeper consent decree required us to put in here. There's a lot of authority to go out and inspect, require inspections, and require repairs. So I think the aggressive aspect of it will come when, you know, we, we know where the real problem areas are, we'll know that in about six or eight months. And then at that point, we'll start going out with capital programs to address those problem areas, and then work on the laterals in those problem areas. So I don't really need to build a target date into the ordinance, I think that might work against us in some ways. I'd rather just set goals when we have more facts and information. With that, I'm glad to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions, comments, Mr. Grokot?
So I do have a question. We've taken out the thing about selling of a home, but not if, if somebody remodels a home, then they, they still have to do the inspection and so forth.
That's correct. It's up at, if there's seventy-five thousand dollars worth of remodeling, or replacing 50% of the square footage, or a change in use, the changes are defined, then there would, there would be a requirement for the inspection of the sewer lateral.
Inspection, which wouldn't necessarily mean that anything would have to be done.
That's correct.
Just pay for the inspection.
That's correct.
And if everything's clear, then you're in the clear.
That's right.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, the question about, you're going to go out and do some data gathering the next six to eight months, so should we expect a report in, about that timeframe to come back and describe a calendar, or what would you expect?
Yes, definitely. Yes.
All right, great.
It's on my work plan.
Perfect. Okay. Anybody like to comment on this out there?
Oh, come on, guys, it's sewers. All right. Did you guys lose a bet? What happened here?
I bet you, it's a school project, right?
Yeah, we have to include.
Gotcha.
Don't mention the mistakes. Never mention the mistakes, your teachers, we're flawless up here, so, on your report, make sure you say that. So I move ordinance number
1424.
1424 ordinance of the City of San Carlos, amending the San Carlos Municipal Code, replacing section 13.05 regarding sewer lateral inspection, repair, and/or replacement, and replacing section 13 dot 08 regarding sewer use.
Second. Mr. Rubens, a question first?
Just for clarification, this is again, an introduction of the ordinance.
I was, okay, an introduction of that ordinance.
Second. Through the chair, I apologize, Ms. Paul, and you're going to, you're going to get rid of me, but
No, I know.
Wasn't the last one 1424?
No, I know, it's, no, it was 1427, but believe me, that's the correct number.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, guys, remember, none of this on your report.
Sorry. Row call, please.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Royce?
Yes. And our last item is 10B. This is consideration introducing an ordinance amending section 2.24.060 and 2.24.070 of the San Carlos Municipal Code regarding length of service of commissioners and terms of existing commissioners. Mr. Moore?
Thank you.
Hey, how you doing? Good to see you.
Good to see you, folks.
Coming up, waited for this.
That's right, last but not least.
We should have put you first, I'm sorry.
There you go. As you, as council will recall, at your last meeting, we had a discussion of this item regarding reducing the term limits of commissioners from nine to six years, something the council asked us to prepare earlier this year. There were three areas that you asked us to clarify. One, that term limits were for a total of six years, and not dependent on the number of terms, per se. Second, that the six-year term limit restarts any time that a commissioner is appointed by the council to a new commission. And C, that the six-year term limit period goes into effect at the end of a term for commissioners that are currently serving. So you will see in the attachment, that I've worked with the city attorney, and we have tweaked section 224060 and 224070 to clarify the language to make in those three areas. So both, the city attorney and I believe that as the ordinance revisions are currently drafted, this now reflects the feedback that you provided at your last meeting. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. City attorney is here as well. There you have it.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I move to introduce ordinance number
1425.
1425?
Yes. Stop it.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, amending sections 2.24-dash-point-060 and 224-070 of the Municipal Code regarding length of service of commissioners and terms of existing commissioners.
First second, row call, please.
Wait, you don't have a second, and I would like to have some discussion.
I'd like to make a second, if it hasn't already.
I didn't second them.
Second. I heard a moment, sorry. Mr. Grokot, I'm sorry.
So, as a point of discussion for the council, I'd like to hear what the council members think of the whole process, because for me, you know, we don't have term limits for council. We go to the voters and ask to be reelected as many times as, you know, we so desire. And for myself, I'm, I'm more in favor of that kind of thing, that, you know, you, you take it to the market and see if you can sell, sell it to the market again. If your, if your product's old, you won't get, you won't get a sale. And I think in the terms of commissioners, what I, I appreciate this coming up and this discussion. I've always thought it's not proper that what we've done in the past is, is we've said to commissioners, well, do you want to serve another term? And they say yes, and so then we don't advertise. I think the proper process is to say, okay, you know, we've got these two or three commissioners on planning or whatever, and their, their term is up, so we advertise, and they apply, just like everybody else. And when they come in and they, you know, we do the questioning and so forth, that they say, you know, my name is XYZ, and I've been on the commission for this many years, I do want to serve, and here's what I've offered, and, and I'd like to continue because, you know, this is, this is why I'd like to serve. And they're just in there with the mix of everybody else who's applying, and then it's up to us. And if, and, and rather than have an ordinance that ties the hands of future councils, I think it's better for councils to have an understanding amongst themselves that, you know, we want our commissioners to serve four years, or six years, or whatever, and so when the applicants come in, and even the, the re-applicants come in, if the council at the time feels like four years is enough, they can consider that in their interviews. But for us to tie the hands of a, of future councils with an ordinance that says, it's, you know, term limits of six years, I don't think's the right thing to do. I think the right thing to do, just last statement, is to have an open interview process, and you don't assume, just because someone's re-upping, that you don't open it up for applicants.
Okay, Chair, Mr. Mayor, that was the exact reason that I, I brought this up originally at our strategic retreat, is that I wanted to see that sort of process. And we had this discussion many months ago, and it was four to one back then, so I'm glad that something apparently has changed, to keep the process the way it was. And if you just didn't feel a commissioner should be reappointed, we'd have the discussion that, that we have up here. And that didn't go so well, so maybe that's why we see how, it's not really a, a good process to do it that way, where you're just discussing one commissioner up here, and whether or not to appoint. So I completely agree with Councilman Grokot's thoughts, because that's exactly what I thought we should be doing from the get-go, is that the commissioners, when they come to the end of their term, they reapply. And whether that's a reapply, a reapplication, where we sit down with the one commissioner, and talk about their time, and whether they want to serve again, or we just open it up, as Mr. Grokot stated, and have applications again, I think that, maybe we can have a longer discussion on that, but I completely agree. I voted, I expressed at the last meeting, last time we talked about this, I'd be voting no on this, because I didn't agree with that, making term limits even shorter, I just thought the process needed to be changed in general. So I would love to have a longer discussion on that, if the other three council members agree. But if, if not, I'll be voting no on this, but I, I completely agree with Councilman Grokot, and I've been chiming in about that for a while, and I'm glad he agrees as well. So it's up to you guys.
Any other discussion?
I would probably support, it strikes me as a different issue of how we would want to do that, and if, if there's, at the mayor's pleasure, I would, I would support agendizing that discussion and bringing it up as a, as a topic.
Yeah, so, everybody agree with that?
Yeah, I agree with that.
As Mr. Klein stated, it's a different process than having term limits. So as far as this ordinance, I'll be voting no on this ordinance.
Probably going through the chair. I agree they are different processes, but I don't see them as exclusive.
No, you could keep the nine years, or if that's
Or knock it to six, and keep the, keep the re-application process. Personally, I will be voting for this. I, I think we have seen, up until the most recent opportunity, that we have a lot of folks who want to serve. And I think there was a desire from the council to be able to make certain that we could get more people involved and more, more people onto commissions as we possibly can. So to that extent, I would like to see turnover as best we can get.
Yeah, and I'd like to say, I think, not, not only did we have the desire of a lot of people that wanting to serve, I, I think it's also good from a change point of view. It encourages people to, to go from, from arson culture to park and rec to planning. I mean, there's plenty of, of commission opportunities for people to contribute there. People could go from park and rec to helping out with hometown days, or chairing hometown days. It is not a commission, it's an activity, it takes leadership. The, the, the active people that are the doers in the city, we're not going to stop them, they're going to continue to do, whether or not we make it limited or not. But I do think turnover change is good, and I would even, I think Mr. Grokot's discussion on city council, you could say some of our best couple of city councils, like, come to my mind, are, have been long-term on the city council, but that doesn't prevent them from being on city council for, for a couple of terms, taking a break, doing something else. If they're that good, they'll come back, and they could do it again, like, like your comments. So I, I think you made some really good points, but I think in terms of what we're trying to do here, I'll be supporting this. I don't have any comments, I've seconded the motion. So we, we don't have a motion yet, though, do we?
No.
I'm sorry.
No, no, roll call.